Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. In attendance, we have Randy Isner, Jane Nevin Smith, myself, Amy Parsons, and Molly Keegan. Absent tonight is Joyce Chunglo. There's no speaker on.
Alex, are you able to fix that? Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna start off this meeting with the Community Block Development Grant and ADA. So we have John O'Leary and Jim Mazick here. So John's gonna start off with an update on the rehab, and then Jim's gonna go into the ADA. And Mike Kennedy as well. If you guys wanna come up forward here to the microphone. Did you check to see if this microphone was on? This one?
Good, all right. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide a select board as well as residents of Hadley on the performance of the town's FY twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Program. Just a quick background, this grant was applied for funds through the state's Community Development Program with the town of South Hadley. So between the two towns, they received a total grant award of five hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred dollars to fund two activities, one of those activities being the Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program, and then an ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. Just to quickly give an overview of those two activities, the Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program provides loans to individual homeowners up to the amount of forty thousand dollars to improve homes through, whether it be code improvements, housing, roofing, siding, windows, weatherization, heating systems, bringing any plumbing and electrical up to code. It's a, the program is pretty nice in that it's a fifteen-year deferred payment loan. So if the homeowner remains at home for more than fifteen, fifteen years, the loan is actually forgiven. It becomes a grant. We still do have funding available for that program. So if there's anyone that's interested in applying, I would suggest that you reach out to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission at four one three seven eight one six zero four five and ask for Shirley Stevens. She's our intake specialist, or someone in the town can point us in the direction to our commission. So to date, we have seven applicants that we have town owner agreements in place. Of those seven projects, four are currently in the bidding phase. Two projects are under construction, and one project has the chief substantial completion. So it's moving forward pretty well. But again, like I said, just to stress, there is still funding available. So if anyone's interested, please apply. And then the second activity is the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. So the town received funds, hired a consultant to conduct a self-evaluation transition plan. Just a quick background on that, the town put together an RFQ for procurement for the consultant that went out in early spring. By May twelfth, we, the town had received three proposals. Of those three proposals, the Center for Living and Working group out of Worcester was selected and awarded the contract, which then got underway in the summer. And actually, I have one of those consultants here with me, Jim Mazick, who will talk more about the plan itself and how it went.
I'm actually gonna defer to Mike. So I'm actually a subcontract to Center for Living and Working. We've been in partnership for probably fifteen, sixteen years or so. But I'll talk in a second. I'll let Mike introduce himself, a little bit of background himself. I'll do the same, and then we'll get right into the ADA one.
All right, great. Yep, thanks, Jim. Can everybody hear me?
Can't hear you, Mike.
Oh, no. Because everything seems to be fine at my end.
Yeah, one second, Mike. Mike, if you can wait one second, we've just gotta make an adjustment.
Hello, Mike.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Great, great. Hey, I'll, I'll be brief. I understand that time is of the essence here. So I just wanna start off by saying, on behalf of Center for Living and Working, the ADA Plan Consulting Firm in partnership with Jim Mazick, who is right there with you. I just wanna say thank you so much for entrusting us to administer your self-evaluation and transition plan. So what I'll do from here, I'll go back, I'll defer back to Jim and let him, you know, start. And then I'll, I'll be back on for the, the actual self-evaluation portion of the plan. But, but other than that, the background is, I've been, you know, working with cities and towns for many, many years now. And most of that has been in partnership with Jim. You know, and God, we've worked on, on probably a good thirty cities and towns in Massachusetts together. So that being said, I'm gonna defer back to Jim.
Hey, thanks, Mike. So those of you who don't know me, I know Carolyn does, and we've met Jane. I'm a planner by trade, forty years in the planning profession in eastern part of the state and in western Mass. And the past thirty-two years, up to two thousand and twenty, part of my retirement was a part of my planning mission. I was a community development department, was also a deputy director. I did these plans independently in the year around two thousand to two thousand and five, six, seven, eight. Then that's when I partnered with Center for Living and Working Inc., and we've done these twelve in Commonwealth. Actually, I'm gonna make a correction on Mike. We've done close to fifty, eighty-eight plans across the Commonwealth. You know, we collect, both individually and collectively. Since two thousand and eighteen, Mike and I have completed over twenty-five media plans. And that goes from Berkshire's all the way to Halifax, which is right next to Bridgewater in Plymouth, and actually down to the Cape Town. So anyway, so background. The American with Disabilities Act was signed into law by President George W. Bush back in nineteen ninety. It's a civil rights law. It is intended that there is equal access to programs and services to all, regardless of physical or mental impairment. There are five titles under the ADA. There are two titles that are particular to municipalities such as yourself. Title one is employment, equal employer and opportunity. Title two is programs and services. So it's intended that, that, that there is equal access to programs and services in a governmental jurisdiction. And that is the requirement for a self-evaluation and transition plan to evaluate in terms of recommendations for your programs and services. The current standards are two thousand and ten ADA standards, and went back from two thousand and twelve. Massachusetts also had its own specialized section of the state building code by twenty-one CMR. It is a building code. It is strictly governed by construction and triggered by construction. It is not a civil rights law. So if the work on a building is less than thirty percent of the value and a hundred thousand dollars worth of work is being done, just the work needs to be made accessible. If it's under thirty percent of the value, over a hundred thousand dollars, then the work, access, bathroom, drinking fountain, all things need to be done within that building. If the work is more than thirty percent of the value of the building, then the entire building must comply with the compliance. There are differences under five twenty-one and the ADA standards. We look at the higher of the two. If you had a chance to look at the report, you'll notice at the tables, and we have, to be cite the codes for the ADA and also five twenty-one. And we, yeah, we recommend, in the recommendation piece, what needs to be done, the client is based on the higher standard of the two. The policy content and the planned, the planned content and format. There are four sections. Again, for those of you, if you, if you all had a chance, please browse through it. Okay, great. And Jane, I know you've already found some typos and corrections, and that's why this is a final draft. We're gonna give, we're gonna say two weeks that folks should look at it, get us, and we'll make the change, reprint on your hard copies. So where was I? Okay, so we have four, four sections of the plan. We have what we call the front end, and it's a more of a reference area. We have the similar, it's for all, all the plans we do, we'll be tailored as need, reach the municipality. I'll get back to that in a second. We have the self-evaluation piece, which Mike is gonna talk about. We have the transition plan, which is the individual facility assessments, and then the appendices, which includes any policies, procedures, forms, or whatever they, we recommend right here. On the front end, I'm not gonna go into all detail on that. But there, there are these, we want you to be able to have this as like a one-stop shopping guide. So we have things in there, which, if you have questions, what you can, you can refer in that front end piece. That includes EV charging station guidance, because there aren't regs on that. Historic properties, more information about those different state federal regulations. We have a section on working territories for persons with disabilities. We have a section on ADA support versus service handles. We have a section on ADA compliant portable toilets. I'm not where the details are, but that, we've never seen an ADA compliant portable toilet. If you read that section in the, you know, in that front end piece, you'll, you'll know why. A section on emergency I want stations. And we also have a section, which is a more recent addition we've done, on assessment routes of travel and different plate surface materials, including playground surface materials. We have about twelve or so different types of materials that can be, that can be used. We have pros and cons, and we have a process per square foot of each of those. On the self-evaluation piece, only five areas required to look at. We look at eleven different areas, because some of these are important. So you need, should have some content within your plan. So I'm gonna stop there. I'm gonna go back on the transition plan more detail. But I'm gonna turn over to Mike. He's gonna talk about some of the findings on the self eval. And then I'll get back on the transition. So Mike, you wanna talk about the self eval?
Oh, absolutely, Jim. Thank you very much. So, yep, so just, you know, for the sake of time, I'm just gonna really go over things at a high level. And just know that, you know, once the plan is complete, that, you know, we're not fly-by-night, we're available, you know, for questions anytime, including what's on the self-evaluation piece. So I'm just gonna go as quick as I can down the line here. So first, permissions on disability. It appear, it doesn't appear that Hadley has one. So it's recommended that the town, through annual town meeting action, accept the provision, you know, provisions of Master of Law, C forty, section eight J to a establish a commissioner on disability, and allow the select board to appoint a minimum of five members to serve on this board. The next is ADA coordinator. The, the Human Resources Director Troy Bryn is listed as the ADA coordinator on the Mass Office on Disabilities website under its municipal ADA coordinator listing. However, the annual town reports list town administrator Carolyn Brennan as the ADA coordinator. Recommendation, you know, Hadley should clarify the appointment of the ADA coordinator and, and let Mass Office on Disability know if it is Carolyn as opposed to Troy. And the town should, you know, name the ADA coordinated, coordinator in its related ADA documents, including the grievance procedure, ADA public notice, and reasonable accommodations policy, which I'm gonna talk about further. And in absence of a commissioner on disability, consider creating a ADA or an ADA coordinator webpage under departments and add the ADA-related documents in that webpage. So, public notice. You know, the town's website doesn't, doesn't appear to have any kind of non-discrimination policies, regarding its residents or visitors with disabilities. So it's recommended that the town adopt a public notice of non-discrimination, which should be added to the ADA coordinator's webpage under departments. And, you know, this notice should be posted on town hall bulletin boards and, and, yeah, on the town bulletin boards and in the website. ADA grievance procedure. It does not appear that the town of Hadley has a, has adopted a ADA grievance procedures as required under the ADA. There's certainly no policy mentioned in the town's website. You know, so, so it's recommended that the grievance procedure should be formally adopted if it hasn't already done so. And this grievance procedure should include the ADA coordinator by name, title, and contact information, and then posted in the town's website and town hall bulletin boards. And we also included a sample grievance procedure for, for your use. Next up is policies, procedures, and, yeah, policies and procedures. Recommendations, it's recommended that the town adopt a reasonable accommodation policy, discuss further, and incorporate non-discrimination language, essential function requirements, physical requirements, and employment listings and job descriptions. And again, there's, you know, there'll be, you know, samples, you know, a sample to, you know, use as a guide. Reasonable accommodations. You know, reviewing, you know, reviewing the job descriptions, well, the few that I had to choose from. You know, it's just recommended that job descriptions use clear, concise, non-tactical language and defining essential functions. And description should focus on the outcome, not the process to achieve that. So some examples would be stationary position versus stand or sit, move, traverse versus walk. You know, because there are some, you know, a lot of jobs out there, like, say, a, you know, administrative assistant. Does it need to walk to the coffee machine? You know, anybody, you know, it, yeah, it could be, you could, if you're a wheelchair user, you can roll to the coffee machine. So, you know, that kind of language is really just not necessary. And, you know, so again, we do have a, you know, samples, you know, under various appendixes included in the plan. So, you know, there, next is maintenance of accessibility features. During the facility assessments, you know, we noticed a number of, of things that were in direct violations, like items placed in front of dispensers, operational buttons, interior, exterior doors with excessive operating forces and closing speeds. Again, there's a, you know, a full list in the actual ADA plan. So, you know, just recommended that facilities are inspected regularly to ensure compliance with program accessibility and to initiate repairs and related actions as required. Next is effective communications on auxiliary aids and services. You know, just based on what was submitted in response to the ADA self-evaluation survey, it doesn't appear that, you know, that there are any, you know, accommodation features available, you know, just by looking at the, you know, website and various documents. So it's recommended that the town of Hadley add the following to all meeting agendas. If you need an auxiliary aids or services for effective communication, such as sign language interpreter, assistive listening device, you know, contact the ADA coordinator as soon as possible, you know, before the, you know, the meeting itself. And it's recommended that the town purchase an assistive listening system, preferably a portable, when that can be used for meetings that are open to the public and be available as an accommodation request. But, you know, all that being said, some of the survey responses that came back went from the public library, you know, stating the library is equipped with assistive devices for those with hearing, with partial hearing, and interpretive services can be requested and provided free of charge. The Hadley Public School survey response stated that sign language interpretation is available. And the Hadley Council on Agent survey stated that assistive devices are available for people with hearing loss, including earpieces for rooms that there are speakers in a microphone system for the dining room and exercise room. Now, if that system is portable, and, you know, that could be used in other areas, like maybe the annual town meeting. But I don't know exactly what this assistive device is. And we're getting near the end here, folks. So website accessibility. The town of Hadley uses government websites by Civics Plus. And that is a, it's, it's a very common, you know, you know, website host. And it's very ADA and screen reader friendly. In fact, a visually impaired colleague of mine using the most recent edition of Jaws screen reading software said she was easily able to navigate the town of Hadley's, you know, website. She stated that all the links are accessible, as well as the actual content. Emergency preparedness evacuation plans, emergency shelters. It's, there wasn't a whole hell of a lot on the town's website pertaining to this. So it's recommended that the guidance provided in chapter seven of this document be followed when developing a emergency management plan. And more specifically, that notification and assistance to persons with disabilities be included within the plan. You may recall, Jim, talking about the front end of the ADA plan. That, that content is in that section. And then finally, polling places. According to staff within the town clerk's offices, all voting takes place at the senior center. And the senior center was recently constructed and is readily accessible for people with disabilities. The polling area includes one lower and wider voting booth available for people that use wheelchairs, or just find it easier to sit versus standing. And in addition, there is a automark voter assist terminal available for voters that have disability, disabilities, including people with visual impairments that enable them to vote independently and in privacy. And I was told by the town clerk that the automarks is placed in such a way that the screen is not visible to the voting public, that, which ensures privacy. So that is the very, 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 very abridged version of the self-evaluation plan. And if you have questions, you're welcome to ask. If not now, it can be any other time, as I had mentioned before, that, you know, once this is complete, you know, we're not totally gone. You know, we always available for questions. So thank you for your time, and I'll send you back to Jim.
I see I have three minutes. I put it seventy-eight RPM, and I'm just gonna go through general building findings, local plans. I'm gonna touch a couple buildings, some key ones. So in general parking, there are no, the accessible parking space is signed as too low or too high, or the running slopes were in excess of two percent. Or there's no van accessible space. In many cases, the outside drop boxes or airphone buzzers are too high, more than forty-eight inches, above finished floor. That's ADA standard. Or the excessive route of travel had excessive running slopes, or there were abrupt changes in level surface going to those, those entrances. Mike mentioned doors often had excessive operating forces, five pounds interior, fifteen pounds exterior, closed through fast, less than six seconds. Steer railings were not round or oval in shape, lacked top and bottom extensions, or in some cases lacked railings entirely on one or both sides. Not compliant knob style hardware, signage was missing, tactile signage, room designated signage, or it was at the wrong height or at the wrong location. Many things were not within reach range. Reach range is forty-eight inches under ADA. That was your light switches or other things, dispensers. In many cases, drinking fountains were not high, were not high and low. The drinking fountain needed a high fountain and a low fountain. In some cases, if the, if the low fountain didn't have, didn't have the adequate twenty-seven inch mineral clearance. Patrute of objects, that's anything that's more than four inches from a wall surface on accessible to travel or had a twenty-seven, eighty inches. So in many cases, there were protruding objects. And I'm not gonna see if I can see one over here, but I can't up top of my head, so I pointed out, but I can't. Service counters were in excess of thirty-six inches, thirty-six inch counter, right, for service counter, thirty-four inches for food counter. So some of your counters were in excess of that. Staff kitchenettes, and we had those at the library. Staff kitchenettes, which were too high or lacked knee clearance. So in the library, there were three kitchen, three, yeah, kitchenettes. I think there was two meeting rooms, children's, community, and also staff room. They're not ADA compliant, brand of building, should be. In many cases, the doorway thresholds, again, exceeded the, the height requirement for unbeveled and beveled. Hopkins Academy, a couple quick things that were there problematic. I mean, there are many, wait, there are many things problematic, but big ones. There are bathrooms at level one, electrical hallways. The only accessible bathrooms are down by the, by the gym. You can't have, if there are bathrooms located in one wing or another section of the building, there must be also accessible bathrooms, because it's discriminatory action to require someone to go from this part of the building way over here to get to the accessible bathroom. The similar situation is in the town hall with bathrooms on the second floor, and then the accessible ones on the first floor. And because further compounded by the fact that the lift takes about a day to go from the top to the bottom, you know, by, up on the second level, you do the bathroom, it's gonna cause a problem. The other problem with the lift is that chairlift, if it's, if it's in the open position, I can't get into the wheelchair. And if I'm in a powered wheelchair, I can't, I don't have use of my, my hands, I can't really move that. So that wheelchair, that chairlift, so I kept it in the open position for someone to use.
Jim, can I just, Amy, if you're okay with this, because we have our hearing scheduled for six thirty, we have to start. But I don't think it's gonna take that long. If you guys wanna wait, so if you guys have any questions, I'm, because that's.
Are you willing to stay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You wanna stop it, open the hearing, and we can continue? Then I can slow down my.
Yeah.
You can breathe again.
The bathroom's still to do, and I still have.
So, yeah, we can do that. You guys can just step aside.
Okay.
Who do we have from Pride? Who is it?
It should, yeah, it's not there.
Just says, uh, oh, Eleanor.
Hi Amy, it's Jennifer.
Hi.
Eleanor Gordievsky.
And, um, so Jim Channing is here from the Pride. Um, he's their attorney, he can speak to that license.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi Jim. Hi.
You better announce that we're having.
So we're, I'm just gonna open that we're, we're opening up the public hearing. Um, Pride Operating LLC DBA Pride number six zero three has submitted multiple amendments to its existing off premises. Um, off premise wine and malt license, including LLC manager and officers and licensed manager. Um, that proposed new manager is Eleanor Gordievsky. Is it Eleanor or Elena? Elena. Okay.
Again, good evening. Jim Channing, attorney for Pride. Uh, local address two four six Cottage Street in Springfield, Mass. Oh, one, one oh four. For your consideration, we have three proposed corporate changes and one proposed operational change. With respect to the corporate changes. One, uh, there's no change of ownership. Pride Convenience Holdings Inc. or LLC would still remain the owner. We're just proposing to take them off as LLC manager. We are proposing to add our CFO and our executive vice presidents as LLC managers to Pride Operating LLC. And lastly, we just offer, uh, offering up our CEO to actually be listed as an officer with Massachusetts database. Obviously, those three changes, as well as our proposed operational change, are all subject to your approval, as well as the approval of the ABCC. With respect to our licensed manager proposed change, again, Elena's here. With me via Zoom as well. Um, I'm happy to report that our current licensed manager actually got promoted within the company. So it's not a matter of needing to replace someone based on them leaving. But actually, it's a just a lateral change where Elena's been a manager with, uh, with us for quite some time. She's obviously, I don't want to speak for her, uh, but she's familiar with our responsibilities, the obligations, especially obviously carding. She's tip certified as well as all our employees are tip certified as well. And again, uh, we'll be on site for over forty hours a week. She again is on to answer any questions you may have here as well. We appreciate your time tonight.
All right, so any comment or questions?
Uh, just Jennifer, anything on your end? That we should make note of? Or is everything in accordance with your needs?
I have Molly, yes, all their license application is complete. They had submitted a few documents asking them to replace. The original one, um, I attached them there for y'all to review under executive content. Um, but everything is in order and we're ready to go.
I will, we accept the changes from the Pride.
Second.
All right, motioned by Jane, seconded by Molly. Is there any further discussion? Um, we can do, we can do all those in favor, right? Even when Joyce isn't here, or do we have to do a roll call?
No.
So we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent. Thank you guys for taking the time to talk to us this evening.
Again, I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a happy holiday season.
You too.
Okay. That was pretty quick. All right. So if you guys would like to come back and finish.
I'll slow down. If I can go back, something I just, I skipped over, but just.
Hopkins bathrooms?
What's that?
From Hopkins bathrooms.
Hopkins, just almost back to the beginning, but there just, so on these transition plans, we do. So there are tolerances that are allowed under both ADA and five point CMR. Zero to two inches is one eighth of an inch. Two to thirty six inches is half an inch and more than thirty six is an inch. So for example, um, if something is a strict height of forty eight inches. And if it's forty eight and a half inches, that's okay, because that's within that greater than thirty six one inch tolerance. So imagine stuff, so we don't include it, just that's fine. However, tolerances do not apply to slopes. Cross slopes, running slopes. So a ramp is eight point three percent, so it's eight point five percent. Technically, it's too steep, we'll note it. I mean, we'll say, but we would, we were mostly, we would recommend, you know, seek a variance if it appears for two percent, point two percent. Um, the benefit gained versus the cost, it's just, it's just not reasonable. So, uh, we note that there, but they also don't apply for, um, so any range of dimensions. So if you have a grab bar. In a bathroom and the range is thirty three to thirty six inches above finished floor to the top of the gripping surface. If it's thirty seven inches or thirty seven and a half inches, it's too high, needs to be lowered. Same thing with railings for a ramp, eighteen to twenty lower, thirty four, thirty eight top. So it's not within that range. And again, because there's no, there's no tolerance, even if it's, you know, uh. Twenty and a quarter inches on the little ramp, it's, it's too, it's too high. So we have to note it. Now, again, in reality, you know, is a quarter of inch, you're gonna, but we, we do know it. So we leave it that. Um. There are areas where we address as a reasonable accommodation if required. So there are some areas, particularly with DPW. Um, please buyer, based on nature, nature of the positions. Um, and many areas are closed to the public. So if there are things noted, in some case, it may be only required as a result of a reasonable combination request. That's detailed in the report. Um, and one thing to note too, when this is something that we, you know. It, it's, we, we have to do schools, schools can be real, you know, bare. Because there are different standards. There's standards for pre K, K to three. Um, four to six, and then seven to twelve, that's adults. So there's four different standards depending by grade level. And the standard, well, I shouldn't say grade because the difference, because um, ADA does it by age. And five point CMR does it by grade and grades and age don't necessarily correspond. And also the, 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 um, standards between ADA and five twenty one for the, for the students are insane. So it's, and we point that out here and then we, it's, and it's overlap, we do the best we can. We'll note it, we're going to use this middle range. If you've got, um, is what that recommendation should be, but that's more detailed than the report. Um, one thing I want to go back on Hopkins Academy, which is also, which, which was a concern. The level one stairs, um, there's reduced headroom, there's no barrier. So if I'm sight impaired, as a stairwell comes. The bottom of six and down, I can, I can walk into that and I can, you know, do some damage to myself. So typically, there's a barrier, either permanent or even temporary barrier, could be planters, could be a fence, whatever, a gate rather, fence railing that's erected below those. Um. Uh, I mentioned the library, the sinks, I mentioned. The other thing at town hall, which you don't want to hear, um, the exterior ramp. Um, besides being deteriorated, it has excessive cross slopes, excessive running slopes. Running slope is eight point three percent for a ramp. Um, it's two percent cross slope and also it's three feet, four inches too long. The maximum run on a ramp before a level area is thirty feet and it's thirty three feet, four inches. So the ramp has got some major issues. If it was only a foot too long and we did a plan two or three years ago in the town of Bucksbridge. Um, and their ramp, concrete ramp was thirty one feet and they had a variance for that from the access board. One foot was no big deal, three point four, three, almost three and a half feet. That's, that's a little, you know, that's getting a little long. Um, so again, common areas, we're back to the, I'm going to go just on bathrooms in general. Um, we saw that cold hooks were typically always too high, dispensers were too high. Forty two inches is the height for a dispenser and forty eight inches for a coat hook. In many cases, the piping below the sink was unwrapped, guarded or insulated. Uh, I mentioned grab bars for some, in many cases, they were too high or too low or. Too far from the interior corner. It's, um, six inches from the interior corner from the rear grab bar, twelve inches of the side grab bar. And they were not at the, at the proper, you know, setback requirements. In many cases, the toilet paper dispensers, toilet paper dispensers were too close to the front of the toilet or too far from the front of the toilet. They have to be seven to nine inches on center from the front. So again, it's easy for me to reach. Um, in many cases, we saw that the water closet flush controls are on this wrong, so we have to be on the approach side, not the wall side. And in many cases, the clearances, so there needs to be eighteen inches on, if I'm on a water closet, the toilet. Eighteen inches on center from the near wall, forty two inches on center from the far wall. Forty two inches from the front of the toilet to whatever barrier or obstruction is in front of that. And in many cases, those were not met at all. Um, we had sick mirrors that were too low and then we had, so if faucets are metered or they have self closing valves. Um, then that same five pounds of operating force for an interior door applies. And also those, um, valves must be open for at least ten seconds. In many cases, if you were just pushing like, open for like two seconds and then it did shut off. We also saw in many cases, there were urinals, had rims were too high, the maximum height is seventeen inches. And I, I think off the top of my head, I think there's something like twenty four, twenty, twenty five inches. Um, and as you pointed out, I incorrectly, we incorrectly noted the women's stall over here. Uh, that stall doors in, uh, not the door going in, but the stall door. Uh, for an accessible toilet stall, the doors must open in, I mean, it must open out, not in. They can, um, they must be self closing. And they also need to have pull devices on both sides of the door, especially if the stall door doesn't self close. And there's no interior closing device, then I'd have to try to reach down like this to the bottom of the stall door and pull it closed. And that's kind of, you know, that's a problem. Um, recreation areas in general, there are lack of accessible routes of travel to and around facilities. Playground's lack of accessible equipment, um, and we mostly saw there is wood chips. And we see this, um, ninety percent of the time, wood chips throughout the entirety of the playground surface. Wood chips, um, may be accepted acceptable as a fall zone, uh, medium. If it meets certain ASTM standards, but it's not acceptable accessible route of travel. Because for a wheelchair user, for someone with a walker or with arm braces, I mean, there's too much drag. It's not firm, hard, stable. So again, there needs to be, and I referenced in the front end, we, we have different types of materials that, that one can use. Could be stone dust, it could be rubberized, it could be, you know, it could be asphalt, but those are more accept. Those are acceptable routes of travel, wood chips is not. Um. So I'm just going to drill brief, just sidewalks and curb ramps, we really focused on Russell Street, um, and then Middle Street. You know, overall, Russell Street was, was in decent shape. There were some concrete pads which were heating. We obviously didn't do the area because it was under construction down, if I'm going the right direction this way. Um, although I came up this way just recently, I saw they gave most of it, but at the time it was not, uh, it was not. Um, so mostly focused on this area going towards North Hampton. Uh, there were some, there was some concrete deterioration, I believe, over in front of the Russell, um. School building, former Russell School Building, uh, and a little bit of abrupt changes. And there were some crosswalks that didn't have detectable warning strips at the curb ramps. Middle Street, different story going towards Bay Road, um, really overall, very. Fair to poor condition, a lot of heaving deterioration, a lot of abrupt change in level surface, much. Due to the, you know, tree roots, and you probably already know that, you've walked. Um, there was, there were some gaps in asphalt, broken asphalt deterioration, excessive running and crawl, well, not really. Running slopes in, in a short distance, but cross slopes, um, running slopes. Typically, if you're, if you're, you can't change topography, but in cases there, it's mostly level, at least on the left going towards Bay. But because of the roots, it's caused root upheaving, it's caused excessive, um, abrupt change in level and then also the, the running slopes. Um, there are a couple of areas where, you know, leaning trees have caused, um, again, the same reduced headroom. If I walk along the sidewalk, so again, if I'm, if I am sight impaired and using a, I can't pick it up, I'm going to walk into that, you know, the edge of that tree. Um, and the, the curb ramps, uh, throughout the entirety, except down by Bay Road. Um, lacked formal curb ramps and he lacked detectable warning chips. So I mean, this is much more detailed report itself. I mean, but this is just kind of a highlight. Um, as Mike said, so we, we would hope that you folks look at this and, um, I. Found a couple of little typos, Jane obviously found one. So we're going to make those changes if you have others. And we'll, we'll give it to let probably after the new year and then, um, do the final edits, printouts, you have your hard copies. But in the meantime, if there's, like Mike said, we're here. We have communities that we worked with two, three years ago and they call us, you know, and, um. If we can't get out to that site, if it's a travel, we ask them, you know, will send us, you know, take some photos, send us what you're doing or send us the plans, send us, we'll look at them. Or whatever it is, or just call us and we have, there's a facilities director for the town of Southboro. He calls on a regular basis, uh, you know. So, and it's just a quick phone call, am I doing this right? You know, what's the measure for this, that? So we're there, here, you know, well after the fact to do that as well. So you ready questions for either us, we're here now, we're going to be available, we're available after the fact too.
Some, some of the, um. Improvements that you've mentioned are not able to be done without funds, any public funds available.
Yes, so in the, in the appendices, there is a listing of funding sources. Also, now that, once you have the ADA plan complete, you can apply to, through CDPG, through John. And actual for the constructions, and I'm trying to think. Um, well, going back to when I was a PVBC, we did many ADA dairy roller projects throughout the region. Um, you know, libraries, senior centers, town halls, it could be ramps, could be lifts, uh, you name it. Um, and also you can, so you can apply through also through MOD, Mass Office's disability has an annual funding round. To also do actual physical improvements. Um, that is issued in typically in September, it opens up through. Sometime in October, it closes and then they make the awards in December. We're waiting right now for the FY twenty four awards. Um, or, you know, John's, that's what I'm saying, CDPG. So there are funding, there are. Um, and it does also, the other thing with the ADA plan, which is if there is other funding sources you're going for. Open space recreation, um, I'm not sure the status of open space and rec plan, but they never, not require you to have an ADA. You know, plan in place, look at your, your facilities. Um, if you're looking for USDA funding, you know, for any kind of, um, improvements, they require to have an ADA plan done. And it also, uh. Oh, I don't want to say set you up, uh, gives you, gives you protection. Um, from, on the federal side, from the Department of Justice. By this plan, basically this is your capital plan. And as long as you're making some good faith effort to chip away at it, if someone files a replay, you can say, we have, we have an ADA plan. But we've outlined over the next, you know, seven to nine years, what we plan on doing. And as funding comes available, we're trying to chip away at that. That gives you some protection from any kind of lawsuit as well.
Thank you.
So you mentioned Russell Street.
Right.
Which is under the control of the state.
Right.
So if there are issues on Russell Street. Uh, it, will the state be receptive to us saying, hey, there's ADA problems here, will you come and fix it?
Um, I can't answer for the state, so, um.
So you have no experience with that?
You know, if, well, you, you know how.
I didn't know, I didn't know if this maybe took precedent over other things.
Um. I gotta watch what I'm saying in public, in public, especially, I've worked in a public for many years. Um, you can point it out, and at the party, I think, to be honest, there weren't that many, the curb ramps would be the biggest things. And there were some areas where there was heating on the concrete and all that. Um, overall, and they, you know, it appears, I just did a drive by because the work, we were doing a field work and it was, I think just recently, they probably did the, the paving here. And for what I could see, it looked, you know, busy, quick drive by it, you know, but. I think if there are things that are really, that point, pointed out, then, you know, those can be addressed. There are a couple of things I was recall, um, which I believe, which would be in your jurisdiction, and let me just quickly. Um. Okay, Russell Street, no, absolutely. Yes, okay. This would be in your jurisdiction. Um, and as a third, we didn't see, but I'm going to point it out after I address these. So, uh, there are some areas where there was vegetative overgrowth under the sidewalk. And that restricted a clear width, as also someplace with a placement of mailboxes in the sidewalk. Which restricted to clear width, thirty six inch minimum clear width. So that could be under your jurisdiction in terms of placing the mailboxes. What we didn't see, but we typically see on trash day, and this would be in your jurisdiction for setting a policy on this. Is where did it, where did the, uh, you know, the trash bins go? Right in the middle of the sidewalk. So if I'm a mother pushing a, you know, my, my cart with my child in it. Or I'm in a wheelchair, or if I'm with a, uh, you know, with a walker, I now have to find a way to go into the street, which is dangerous, but that's pretty nice. And then around and to get back along to the street. So, um, we didn't see it, but it wasn't trash day. So, um, that. So, um, that'd be something to get your own to check. And if it is the case, then, you know, that's a policy that you cannot put your trash bins in, you know, the right of way of the sidewalk.
So Carolyn, would, um, I mean, I know they need to finalize the report, but would the next step be forming a work group or just parsing this out to the respective departments?
So my initial thought is, because I know some of this funding is, you would need to, um, we, I think the town would, um, A D A, um, commission together, because that I know in my former job, that had to be replaced before I could go from running for the A D A. So that would be my recommendation, that would be the group, um. Whether that's the charge to do this, that could be part of the charge. I'm sure Jim will definitely give us that one, like a bunch of Jim for 25 years.
But then there are like some immediate things, like some of these were like H R related. So like Troy could immediately start working on job descriptions and things like that. Um, and then getting it on the town meeting warrant, you know, for.
Again, if you look in the appendices, there are, again, we have the sample documents there. Um, and like Mike pointed out, some of the language, um, in, in the job descriptions, but some of the basically, like the reasonable accommodations. Um, there, there is a, a, a form to fill out, but also a policy. And that would be, to me, that would be a priority, because if you don't have it, something like I say, well, you know, I, I, I have this and it was never addressed. Well, if you have it, well, did you fill out the reasonable accommodation form? And then the default procedures, because then, then you go to the grievance process. Because then you're, you're resources first, and then it goes through A D A quarter, then it goes to you as the board to resolve it. And if the process isn't there, then one has an ability to file a complaint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of work. Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks for the extra time, too.
Okay, so wait, how, wait, Nash, do you want to try and do some public comments? Do you want to do some consent agenda, do you want some public comments? Okay.
All right, so there was a technical difficulty this past week with board docs. Um, and the public comment section fell off on the internet and I just noticed it this afternoon. Um, so we will still have public comment and we can go ahead and do that right now. Um, is there anyone here for public comments not having to do with the Young Men's Club? Because that would be a part of the public hearing, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they can do, but it would make more sense just to do it during the hearing.
Yeah, so is there anyone here for public comments that isn't here for the Young Men's Club public hearing?
Uh, Alex is not manning that.
He's going to be right back.
Okay. So anyone physically here, public comments not having to do with the Young Men's Club?
And there's no one here for public comments on Zoom either.
Okay. All right, so let's do the consent agenda. I'm going, Jane, down. All right, um, consent agenda. Warrants A P two, four, two, two, A P two, four, two, two S, A P two, four, two, two I N S, A P two, four, two, three, A P two, four, two, three S.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Randy, seconded by Molly. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Um,
we've got people here for committee appointments, do you want to do those?
Okay, actually, you know, I think.
So you want to.
Do climate change, that one should be quick.
Yes, because some of these, um, where you have vacancies, you're, you, you might have people here who you might want to talk.
Um, so we do have, um, a letter of interest for the Climate Change Committee, and that's Kathy Nagella, former Hopkins Academy teacher. And, um, I had her for classes. Um, and so she is interested in joining the Climate Change Committee. Um,
Motion to appoint Kathy Nagella to the Climate Change Committee.
Second.
All right, uh, motion by Molly. Shh, excuse me. Sorry, we're in the middle of a meeting. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you and welcome to the Climate Change Committee.
We'll just need you to get sworn in at the clerk's office whenever you get a chance.
Um, we can do the resignations and withdrawals pretty quick, I'll just read that off. Um, the following resignations have been submitted and are currently in the process of looking for replacements. Um, Town Treasurer's Office Assistant Town Treasurer, Sarah Fairbanks, Human Resources, Human Resources Assistant Shelby Lombard, Police Department Officer Jacob Marini, Dispatch Stephanie Rivera, and Hadley Media Production Assistant Patrick LaBelle.
So there's no vote on that, that's information only?
Just information only. Um, and then also there are library trustee vacancies. Um, so the select board and the library trustees are seeking interest, interested residents, um, to fill two vacancies that were left by resignations. So if there's any interest in, uh, being a library trustee, uh, please send an e- email to info@hadleyma.gov by January fourth.
Twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. These are joint appointments by the select board and the library trustees. So again, if you're interested in joining that, info@hadleyma.gov. Um, also, the, uh, select board and the Hadley Housing Authority are seeking interested residents to fill the vacancy left by a resignation. Um, again, if you're interested in joining the Hadley Housing Authority, uh, email info@hadleyma.gov, and this one is by January eleventh. It's a joint appointment by the select board and the housing authority. All right. Um,
Got a minute, Amy.
Yeah, might as well just wait a second with that. Yeah.
You have a minute. When I sit here was the question. Thanks.
We don't want to do the punch in anything.
All right, it is seven o'clock. Um, so we're going to open the public hearing continuation for the Young Men's Club. The Young Men's Club has applied for an alteration of premise for their club license at one thirty-eight East Street. This is a continuation of the original public hearing that was scheduled for December sixth. We have Mr. Reedy here.
Showtime, perfect. Okay, for the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of the Young Men's Club, as the chairwoman noted, uh, in their application for an alteration of the premises, uh, over on the East Street. And so just for clarity, as I'm sure the board knows, but maybe more for the public, all we're looking to do is alter the existing section twelve club license. And so this is what allows club members and their guests, uh, gives them the license to sell and to imbibe alcohol within the licensed premises. Um, the premises currently is really just the building. And what we're looking to do, you know, we've been here, I think, since June. And so this has been part of the discussion is let's, let's bring it into conformity with what the club actually wants to use the land for. Um, and so we're changing the licensed premises to include the building, the deck, the pavilion, the parking area, the basketball court. And I think we had provided to your licensing coordinator a diagram. And I, uh, put my best Randy Isner hat on and tried to, uh, describe the, the bounds of that licensed premises. Um, but it's, it's on the westerly side of the property, kind of the northwesterly side of the property. And so that's all we're looking for tonight is to alter the premises, to expand it, to include that area. Um, it does not, it's only for club members and guests. This does not include the land to the east, where the ballfields are and where those large public events have been held. That would be, and that will be something different. It's a section fourteen license that we'll be submitting in the next, I would say, couple of weeks to be in front of the board. Um, we'd expect conditions to be put on that license to the board ultimately grant, um, those one-day special licenses. So just to be clear, we're only talking about the club license, um, members and guests. And in the area that we talked about, and this effectively excludes all of that to the east. And last time I was here, we talked about, um, that the, the town and I had talked with the executive director of the A B C C to confirm that this was a suitable, uh, way to move forward for the entire property, where you could separate it and have section twelve on a portion and section fourteen on another portion. So the ask tonight is just to alter that section twelve premises.
Okay, um, I was actually going to start, I know Joyce couldn't be here tonight. Um, but she did send me something to read for her. Um, so in Joyce's words, I'm in support of them using the deck for food and drinks during club hours until 10 P M when they are open. This would follow the pavilion's time for ending events such as it is outside. Um, I also do not have a problem with the license including the property between the club and pavilion, as this is used for car shows once a week, and they have played horseshoes out there as well. So the license would cover the property from the club to the pavilion and include the deck. Any other large venues such as Country in the Country would need a one-day liquor license and be used on the property beyond the pavilion and would need to follow guidelines set forth by the select board. The Young Men's Club is an important part of our community. They have been established long before my time. They have forever been generous to our schools with the use of fields for soccer and baseball. They allowed use of the pavilion for so many chickens to go to raise money for athletic and band uniforms. Um, it was known for a while as, I was known as, I was known for a while as the Chicken Queen. But we always had so many people who participated in this and men who cooked. They donate to the food pantry, give scholarships and donate to other causes in our town. So these are a few reasons as to why I support this club. Thanks for sharing for me, best, Joyce Chumbler.
Terrific, thank you.
So I have a question about the use of the pavilion and, and a club license and how they interact. When you rent pavilion to John Steibig, he's not a member and he does not invite members. And yet they serve liquor there, how does that fit in if this is under the club license?
So as being under the club license, he would have to be a member in order to use it. I mean, that's.
So they couldn't rent it to people who are not club members?
Correct. Section twelve is members and guests, which is, that's why the important distinction, especially leaving, you know, put another way, this area could never be used for, because you can't mix a section fourteen and a section twelve. So by putting this just in section fourteen, it's precluding its use as a, putting it in section twelve, I'm sorry, is precluding its use as a section fourteen.
So you know what would be helpful, whether it's you, Tom, or, or, you know, some of the, the club members? Um, it would be helpful for me then to understand, because that, that would be a change then, right? I mean, so, so by, um, requesting the expanded geography, what would be different if this license is granted versus what has been happening up until this point, I guess?
Sure.
Everybody on the property would have to be active member.
Well, no, everybody that rents it has to be active.
So, so let's say I wanted to have a wedding party.
You cannot rent a pavilion unless you're active.
Right, so I would have to come and say, hey, guys, could I join? And then, okay.
Yeah, and so to continue with that, is there a limit to the number of guests a member can have?
I don't believe so. At, at least as far as the law is concerned, there, there may be some rule to regulate.
Yeah, the law is what I'm concerned with, right?
There's nothing.
So there is no limit, so to Molly's point, if she wants to have a wedding party there, she's going to go get a membership. And then she can have four hundred guests. Those are all her invited guests and therefore she would be allowed, they would be allowed to be served and drink alcohol on the premises.
Yes.
Okay.
Because up until now, I mean, obviously it's been used for, you know, Jack and Jill's and wedding functions and political gatherings and all of that. So that would be different. Yeah.
Okay, and something that got brought up, the, the deck and the actual club building, there is a occupancy limit that even though the deck is bigger than the building itself, the occupancy limit is still the same as I understand it, which I believe is ninety-nine. Okay, and then you have to section off the deck so that somebody can't walk from the deck down the stairs. I believe that's state law, but I'm not positive.
Under, for, for a license?
No.
No, it, it wouldn't have to be that way. I think it might have been because of the way their license, as it currently sits, is structured where they couldn't go out on the deck. And so that, that was actually an excluded part of the premises. What we're trying to do is correct all that to include it. So they should have free flow between the building, you know, occupancy level to the side, just as far as the license and the free flow, flow under the license would allow them, they could go between and amongst building and deck.
So I see a conflict. All right, so I understand that and that makes sense, because it's a nice day, you want to be outside. But if you're going to still have the car show, only one member has to invite all of these people that are otherwise unknown to the club. Is that correct?
Well.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
I mean, if ninety-nine percent of the car show people are members anyways. I mean, I would say if you went there on any given Monday night, you'd ask anybody who was a member, they could provide information that I would say probably almost a hundred percent of them are.
Okay. Next question. If pavilion is no longer in use, when you have your one-day events that we're going to talk about later, are you going to have enough space to have the same numbers of people you had before without using that internal space between the pavilion and the club?
Right now, what we use that pavilion for is E M T station, check-in for guests coming in. So we don't serve alcohol there anyway, so it's a moot point for that. So it doesn't matter.
It's his only, it's only function for every one of those parties has been, if such a country, country has been for inventory and stuff, yeah.
So I guess the question, the question I have, um, and again, I'm sure there are people here who are going to want to speak to this, but so just putting myself in the, in the neighborhood shoes and, and I guess, I mean, I, I feel right now like everybody's acting in good faith and trying to kind of right what was wrong in the past on a variety of fronts, it just evolved over time. You know, so we're trying to get that squared away. Um, I think the addition of the, the deck, you know, that happened during COVID, I think, right? So it really hasn't been in use much. And I would imagine if I were a neighbor, I'd be a little bit worried about an uptick in noise. Um, so can you just talk a little bit about like the hours that would be in use? Um, and if, if there's entertainment, I'm assuming you'd have to have a license. Right, so that would be again, under our.
Back in front of you. Yeah, I mean, there's, I'll let them talk about the hours in a minute, but there are, I mean, this is a license, right? So it's, it's granted at your will, you can put restrictions on it, you can call us back like you had done previously to say, hey, wait a second, you're not acting in good faith anymore or what have you. So, and it's an annual renewal, as you know, for all of these licenses. So it's not something that once it's given, it's given in perpetuity, there's always that ability that you have to rein, if there's something happening beyond what you'd expected, uh, the club back in to have that conversation or to revoke, suspend, modify, et cetera, any of those licenses. So I'll turn to you guys for the, for the hours.
Our intention. Our intentions for the deck when it was built. Was literally for the daytime hours, you know, people only out there and relax in the evenings. I mean, our intentions aren't to have parties out there until ten o'clock at night. There's not. We don't have like live bands, nothing planned on that. It's basically in a nutshell. We've abided by the ten o'clock rule for the pavilion. That's gonna be the ten o'clock rule for the, you know, outside deck. There's not gonna be any issues with that for noise complaints that I can see. If there is, we will correct them and go from there.
And the ten o'clock, that's seven days a week?
Yeah.
So one of the.
Well, not Monday, but.
When I told the permit to the deck, I talked to Tommy and Mike about it. And it was just for seating. For dinner, we served food till nine o'clock. So really, you might have somebody go out there. We have no smoking on the deck, so. People won't be out there smoking on the deck, chit chatting and stuff. Dinner time, that's pretty much it. We're not gonna have any bands out there like that. We have music inside, that's it. So, but we're pretty low use, but narrow.
And so maybe if I could, if it pleases the board a condition that there shall be no live entertainment on the deck. Right, just something like that, if that's a concern.
So with a club license, we can put the same kind of restrictions on it that we can put on a one day license?
Probably a little bit more um.
No, Jane, you cannot. It's it's not the same. There's limitations. Expansion twelve.
So they have internal music in the clubhouse. Is there anything that says they can't put the speaker out on the deck?
I mean, I think if you've got a representation.
I don't think we would, anything.
From these folks saying they won't do it, then you've got it. It's on, it's in the meeting minutes. Call us on it if it happens.
Yeah, this is just a point. When people come in and assemble band, they have their amplifiers and stuff in the our clubhouse. Bellies house.
And then would you um? Because again, it's, this is going to be different. So there's going to be nerves on both sides, right? You know, trying to figure this out. Um have you thought through as I guess a board? Um, you know, some sort of mechanism to kind of formally. Say to the, I'm gonna say the neighbors, you know, in particular, look at if you have any problems. This is how we want you to communicate them so we can address them before it becomes a bigger issue.
The only the only time we've talked is is yeah, through here and heard their concerns. Um. We have sat down, we have done this for a long time. Um I did, I do see there was an issue in the last year and maybe the year before that. Um we have sat down as a board and talked and we do understand and nowhere we made a mistake as to why the noise was so bad. Um we know where we place bars in the past that haven't been an issue. So as far as the last two years that we've done it, we talked about not putting bars in front of the pavilion. Everything's gonna be behind the pavilion. Um that'll help the noise stay down. Everything's gonna be shooting towards the backside of Sam's pretty much where the open field is. Uh towards Moody Bridge Road, so. We've we've looked into it quite a bit to find out where the faults were and we pretty much have it locked down now.
And let me just.
And that's, I know that's a separate.
Yeah, so I was just gonna say to Sean, so that's more, that's the events. We'll be back for that, but I think what Molly is talking about.
That, if there's a noise issue, we built it so we can construct a barrier wall if there is excess noise.
That was my question, yeah.
We'll rip it. We're not gonna, we don't want to irritate the neighbors. We don't want to make it a place where people are sitting there having dinner and a drink and a neighbor comes over and complains to us. So, you know, we have cameras out there, we'll monitor it and, you know, keep an eye on.
And I think to that end, so I think what Ms. Keegan is saying is. Maybe think about coming up with a, hey, we'll we'll send out a mailing to the neighbors so they have. Our email or our number. So if they, you're the first line instead of them going to police or select board, just it's gonna help the communication.
And historically, when we've had events, I know I've gone with the neighbors and talked to them prior to certain events we had. I know. Frank Quadro has stopped at your house and been talking about certain events that we had. Um but, you know, heading here, but immediate neighbors, I've definitely gone around and as a board, we've gotten along and spoken.
But yeah, I think, you know, Attorney Reedy's captured what I'm thinking. I think, you know, that would go a long way to show good faith.
I think that, but yes, it's been said, a phone number that you will answer during an event if somebody has a problem.
That could be provided.
Which everybody has that I spoke to. I give my personal cell phone number.
Okay.
And.
Good.
And just to be clear, Mr. Reedy. You you're, the club is suggesting that they are going, whatever they're going to do in this modified licensed area. Is going to comply with their previous approved permit from the Z B A, correct?
Yes.
A hundred percent.
The. There are two outstanding invoices, I believe.
Fire. They're all taken care of.
They are?
They're all, yes.
Okay. That's good. Yeah, we didn't know. Okay, that's good. I appreciate that.
I'm gonna check myself.
Okay, okay. I was like, it was just on here for me to. They're out there. Okay. Um.
Bye, babe.
So hang on one second. Um are we done discussing amongst ourselves the? Alteration and can I open it up to public?
We're done for now.
For now, like for now, like so we can, okay. Um so if there is anyone here that from a a public standpoint that would like to talk. I'm just gonna kick you out for a little bit.
Mr. Reed, the parts of the microphone. Um could you repeat? The provisions of this map versus the back lot? So in other words, this is, if I understand it correctly, and we're going to produce those eight consellments. The um map that you presented.
Yeah, so that's part of the license application and so if altered.
What you're asking here is that this would be the.
The section twelve club license.
Club.
Club. So that's members and guests. There, it wouldn't be. Country in the Country, Spring Fest, Ball Fest, that could not occur on this portion of the premises.
So you could not co-admit.
Correct.
And so in the the east, the back. Was Country in the Country or events would happen.
Correct, and we would, if we end up with a section fourteen license. For each of those events from the select board. So there's still, that's a whole, and that's why I tried to distinguish it, that's a whole separate path that we have to go down. For those events in that that portion with the selection. Through the chair.
How do you propose that they're segregated and you don't get? Only one, only one event.
So they, for them to do the event, they'd have to get an entirely different license. They'd have to come before the select board. And those, the events can't occur until they come here to us.
So right now, they don't have the opportunity to even have an event until we go through phase two of this.
I think part of your question is something we have asked for in the past for events, and that is fenced area.
Which is what we have.
We've done for everyone.
And so I expect when we come back, that will be one of the conditions that. You know, assuming we get approval, that would be imposed to have that separation via a fence.
For anything in that middle area.
You can park it and you can't serve alcohol.
Yeah, so essentially right now, um what we're talking about for the map. Is the blue outlined area, that's gonna be only what is under the. Club license. Anything outside that area is a completely separate entity, a completely separate. Um liquor license, one day liquor license that would have to come through us at the time or before the time of those events.
Then be conditioned.
And be conditioned. So as of right now, what we would be voting on or discussing tonight. Is the alteration to the blue outlined area as their new premise. Um because as of right now, it's like the events aren't happening essentially until you come back.
Yes, correct.
Is there a way to filter the blue area? In its club, but. And I'm thinking of vehicular traffic. The blue line, white on the map, is the curb line on East Street. So potentially. Potentially somewhere you could have a couple of beers, stumble out into the road.
Senior.
Or stumble out into the painted parking area and be hit by a face. Presently, you can't serve alcohol or consume alcohol outside of the clubhouse. So there is this. So people are staying protected. And that be. Posed a filter to this.
Like a setback, right?
Like the neighbors, the people that are across the street, I'm sure the parents and the young men's club have had. Who would pay this? Sometimes things get out of hand to the neighbors, but especially from the street, they're watching us. It's in the front. Front yards of the street. So I'm asking, is is there a way to filter this so that? Maybe we're talking about the backside of the pavilion. Back or traffic on the street.
Tom, do you have a full scale map? Because all I get on my computer is three quarters of it and I can't tell how far towards East Street the blue line goes.
I've got this.
I probably, yeah. That's right up against the curb, what I saw.
Really, it's a map.
Yeah, okay. But it goes all the way to East Street. Yeah.
Yeah.
You can hold on to that if you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Of course.
So. One of the things that's quite moving on this, from the building straight across. Because one of the issues we have, we have a fortune league that's been going on for thirty something years. People get drinks inside the bar, walk up to the horseshoes. I mean, it's not a large parking lot. There'll be races through there. It's not like the Anderson Mall. You know, it's it's pretty condensed, so.
To to Mr. Aquadro's point, I would suggest that the front of the building, the blue line go to the front of the building, not to the street.
East Street.
Like, yeah, or like to the deck, the end of the deck.
Yeah, so from the deck, the building goes to the.
Right.
The building and that are in line.
Yeah.
So we've made a straight line there.
It's like there's a setback that you can't bring between here and the road.
I think that makes sense.
And that's, should be a little short.
Um, so.
Please understand that, you know, all of this came about because things got. A little crazy, got out of hand. It was, you know, the alcohol was one issue, the noise was one issue. The vehicular traffic, the number of people. So the neighbors all had to adapt. And. Obviously, you know, there are some of us that are irritated that it got out of hand and we're here now. Being. We're trying to find a concession, but we also want from the neighbor side. We're looking for a little more respect in downsizing some of this. For our, for our benefit. It is a residential neighborhood. And you are a a club or a social club, I presume, if you're not a social club or you. You're not operating as a tavern and and not operating as an event than you. Then you shouldn't, you know, shouldn't have these mega events and things shouldn't scale down.
Um so I just wanted to do a point of uh clarification and like for the record, just for you two, just to say your names and then your positions. For the club.
Yeah, I'm Sean Gould. I'm the president.
John Lishkovsky, junior treasurer.
And then.
I'm Frank Aquadro. I'm a resident.
Okay.
On East Street.
Sorry, just so that we could, anyone that's on the line, yes?
It'd be a great. Able to provide.
Oh, yeah. So before you talk, just grab a microphone. You're not gonna hear it in here. It's more for those who are online so that they can hear.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um yeah, just grab a microphone and then just say your name.
Yeah, my name is Lee Kane. I'm at one thirty East Street and uh. I'm, I don't really know anything about the Young Men's Club and I was wondering if you could tell me what are the. Uh requirements for membership? You're opening an area up to members and guests. What are the limits of membership?
Uh you have to be twenty one years old to join. If you're a Hadley resident, it's a cheaper rate than if you are a non-Hadley resident. Once you come in, uh you get signed sponsored by a member that's there. It goes to the board of directors on our monthly meetings. We vote on who you are, we vote you in. Once you get voted in, then you become a member.
Are there any limits to the number of members you can have?
There is not.
So like all of the U Mass students could be members?
Correct.
Well, that's a concern to me. If you have a whole entire area toward the front of the property where.
Well, we've been, we've been in, we've been in business since nineteen thirty nine. And we have not had any more than five to seven hundred members and we're not gonna sit there and go promote flyers to U Mass and they can be members.
Well, I I'm getting, you know, I had the idea that.
Yeah.
Like the rear of the property with four events was for events, but now you're saying you could have seven hundred people in the front of the property.
And so, right, so speaking on, I think what you're trying to get to about the larger events, that's a separate license. We're not looking, we are looking for the club license. We don't have seven hundred person parties in the front of the house.
You actually can't do more than whatever the occupancy limit is anyway.
Well, that's.
Correct.
That's in the building, correct.
Right. Yeah, so we have a pavilion.
Yeah.
But in the pavilion, we have a certain occupancy that we can have in there. You can't fit. I think it seats two hundred and fifty people. At max.
So I think the gentleman's concern is that, let's say tomorrow. A thousand people decide they want to become members of the club. We gotta turn away because attention has been brought.
No.
No, you could.
No, you can accept, you can accept the memberships.
And then somebody has a party. And then you have a thousand people and and this is hypothetical. I, please bear with me. That's the concern. So that's what I think you need to address that.
Right, so the concern being, which I understand what you're saying, our pavilion only holds so many people. We have a pavilion coordinator. When she books parties, how many people are coming? There is a limit on the people. Because we only have a certain size bar in the pavilion that we can only handle so many people.
So is there a number limit? If I want to have a wedding reception at the club. Am I limited to how many people I can invite?
I would say when you deal with the the coordinator, there is.
But you you don't know what that.
I I don't know personally what that number is. I know what the parking lot can hold. I know. What we can manage in the pavilion.
Yeah.
So there's only so many people you can get.
We also heard about parties who start and then other people come because they hear about. And even though that may not be what he planned for his party, everybody wants to be at his party. And so we all show up.
So that being said, I think the largest party we've had, which was a fundraiser for a gentleman who got injured in a tow truck accident. And then this past summer, we had a benefit for uh. The kid that got killed over in Hatfield. I think there was four hundred people max at both those parties. And tho- those are large events. Again, it's what the property can hold. Yeah.
Can we stick with my? Number? Where there's hearing?
Well, can I say something first? Because I I hear, I'm a little confused because I thought this uh blue zone was open to guests and members. And then I I hear you talking about the pavilion and particular parties, so. Could you clear that up for me?
Pavilion's in the blue area. It's on the photo. It's the.
I know where the pavilion is, but I'm so if we have two different kinds of events. Different kinds of things that could happen.
Like standard operating in the club versus.
Yes, it's, it's all one property. So under the new regulations license we're going for, that whole blue area covers the club and pavilion. So during most events, the people who normally come into the club go to those events. We can only hold ninety-nine people in the club. So if there's five hundred people out back, four hundred people, they can't all come into the club. Because we can only hold ninety-nine.
Okay.
I, I just, uh, a few minutes back, you were talking about uh, club members and their guests could be in that blue zone. And now you're talking about pavilion events.
A pavilion event is rented by a club member. So to rent the pavilion, you have to be a member of the club. So if you're a member of the club, you rent the pavilion. Say you have a wedding or a Jack and Jill. Wedding for two hundred and fifty people. You can have two hundred and fifty people back there.
So a, a, a member of the public who wants to rent the pavilion for a wedding cannot do that. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct. You have to be a member of the Young Men's Club.
They could join the club and then have the.
Correct.
And, and to be clear, weddings and things of that nature are allowed by their existing permit.
Uh huh.
Right. Um. Well, I think you understand what the concerns of the neighbors are. I think you wanna, and you know that there'll be scrutiny. So. I guess we'll go with.
I was gonna say, I think that, um, so just for clarification, under the current license, um, it covers the pavilion and the clubhouse as entirety. And what this is doing is just opening the space, um, to include the horseshoe area, the basketball court, um.
And the parking area.
The parking area.
And the deck.
Well, yeah, the deck.
Cause that wasn't.
It wasn't, the deck wasn't on the original permit, but it was an addition that is attached to the clubhouse.
Correct.
You got another customer maybe.
Yeah, is it? Oh, you, and you have the microphone. Perfect. So go ahead and just, uh, say your name.
David Olson. I live at one twenty-eight Bay Road, which is across the field from the, from the Young Men's Club. Um, I, I have some clarification questions about the, about how the law works in this case. Um. Uh, as I was reading through various descriptions of the laws, for the private club, is it, is it true that? That, well, the way it's stated is that members may be served and guests of members may be served. The guests must be introduced to the bartender by the member and can only be served while that member is present. Is that true?
Yes. And I don't know that it says bartender, but the. Yes. They have to be introduced by a member. I don't think it's necessarily to a bartender, but and they can only be there while, and be served while the member who introduced them is there.
Okay. I, I mean, that doesn't sound like introducing two hundred and fifty people. It sounds like bringing a friend to the club.
There's no limitation.
But that's not, okay. Um. I, I, I also read that, uh, if you have a section twelve license, that the local authority cannot restrict the hours uh, with which you, uh, during which you can serve alcoholic beverages uh, between, I think, ten AM and eleven PM, that, that, uh, that they cannot place restrictions on that.
So I think it's between, um, I'd have to look, but there's a prohibitive period through which you can't serve, I think just under the general laws, and I can get the citation, that you cannot serve. Um, but otherwise, and I think what they're saying is they're willing to limit to, because their special permit, I think allows them to go till ten. They're saying here, ten PM.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, would you say that again?
You're at ten PM? So historically, we've closed the pavilion bar at ten PM.
Eleven.
The bar, yeah, the pavilion bar.
Okay.
Closes at ten PM.
And the clubhouse closes.
It's one AM. It's a bar.
One AM?
Correct.
Um.
So. Let me ask a stupid question. Since the pavilion and the clubhouse are now all in this new zone, are we gonna, are you gonna continue to work on the ten o'clock, one o'clock?
Correct. Because currently pavilion is ten o'clock. We're, we're allowed to, that's.
Just asking.
Yeah, no, and I get what you're saying. We're not looking to expand hours back there. I mean, we have respect for the neighbors to that, where ten o'clock, music's off. We last call at nine forty-five or no. Yeah.
Would the deck fall under that?
The deck, as we said earlier, would be ten o'clock because of the noise. We don't want people out there. As I said, the kitchen closes at nine o'clock. So, yeah, we're not promoting people hanging out and doing stuff out, outside, making noise for the neighbors.
Think Mr. Olson.
To touch on that point, what I think you guys are trying to say is we're not rezoning to try to have bigger parties for regular events. We're literally trying to tie all this into one thing for the deck and the ten o'clock license or the ten o'clock ordinance we're gonna abide by for everything outside. There's not being rezoned to have thousand person parties. It's being rezoned.
I understand. I.
Yeah.
Stand in two zones.
Yep. Yeah, so we'll operate on the ten o'clock PM.
Your understanding of what you want to do relative to inside the building, inside the clubhouse, outside of those structures. So the neighbors had an idea of it being at ten o'clock.
We can shut the deck down at ten o'clock? Absolutely.
Done.
That won't be a problem.
So, so would it be fair to say that after ten o'clock, the only drinking allowed will be inside the clubhouse?
And we put a sign on the door saying shut down.
I think that's what their concern is.
So, but here's the thing, I mean, as. Friends, let's say if you came in for a drink.
Yeah.
We want to go on the deck tonight, so I have a small conversation. We're monitoring the noise. We're not gonna let people be louder on the rule of the deck. But if you want to go out there and sit by yourself and have a beer, I don't think you should be limited to that. You know, we'll monitor. And again, this is, if you guys are gonna complain as neighbors, hey, they're on the deck or being loud, you can bring that back to the board and we can renegotiate it. You can call us and say, hey, you're doing this. We'll change it.
I would, from my perspective, I would like you to say or understand that anything outside of the clubhouse closes at ten o'clock. Inside the clubhouse is one o'clock, which you presently have. And I don't think the neighbors are gonna come over. One or two guys is out there having a quiet conversation and finishing a beer. I don't think anybody's gonna be, you know.
We, we actually, we've actually had a neighbor come from Spur Road at two o'clock on a Sunday afternoon complaining because two people are having a beer on the deck.
Well, you have to understand that.
So, so just saying.
This.
I don't want to put a limit on it because we're handcuffing ourselves. We're, we're not looking to do something to make an impact on the neighborhood that's gonna be unruly, irritate the neighbors. But again, like you said, if, if. So what you're saying is put a limit on ten o'clock, but if one guy or two guys go out there and has a quiet beer, if the new enforcement officer comes over, we get fined.
Well.
So.
It's an easier rule. It's plain simple. Inside is one, outside is another. And, yeah, something can be difficult and come and say, William, drink it on the, on the deck. But, you know, today, there hasn't been a lot of enforcement because this has gone on for a long, long time.
So I think that's the reason that they're looking to change this so that everything is in compliance. I think that was the whole purpose of this.
Well, I was gonna say, can we just check with Jennifer? She's the licensing coordinator and make sure she has the times that she needs in the. Jennifer, are you still there?
I, I'm here. Um, the time will need to be defined for the outside deck. It ha- it has to have something defined on it. There's times on all of the things. It has to be done.
So.
No.
No.
I mean, personally, um. I would say since the deck is attached to the building, that it should follow the building of, you know. Because it's not intended as an entertainment space that it would be included in the, the, the one AM as it being part of, attached to the, the structure.
And it seems like it's the noise, right? It's not necessarily being outside. It's, it's the noise. That's the issue. And so is there a way to say, if it gets to be a problem, then there'll be mitigating, mitigating measures. And you may even want to think about. Right. So. Putting up with something right now. Well, Jennifer, are you still on?
I'm, yep, trust me, I'm here.
So two other bars have outside decks. Arizona Pizza in the Quarters. Do they have limits on their outside drinking?
I'm not gonna pull their licenses up right now, but I believe there are limits on theirs. Um, also, I would just ask if y'all would check in perhaps with, uh, William Dwyer, with Bill Dwyer or Jim Maxowski about having outside in the residential area since y'all are zoned. It's not a commercial area. I would just, I would just think it might be a good idea to just to check in on that since it's residential, not, um, commercial.
So from my.
So that would be a good choice.
From my research, Quarters does not have a limit. And they have more of a college crowd, louder, rowdier crowd than we have.
But they're not residential.
They're, they're, they're in a business. Both of those other bars, hang on, both of those other bars you're talking about are in a business zone. So you have special considerations here.
Yep.
So what I'm hearing is the noise concern is, is what you, you're worried about, right?
Yeah.
So at any point in time, if we decide to grant them the same hours on the deck as inside the clubhouse, at any time, if within the, the, the year after we grant, if we grant the license, we can call them back and say, hey, there's complaints. We're telling you, you cannot be on that deck after whatever time. I believe we have the ability to do that. Is that correct, Mr. Reedies?
Yes.
They, they, they seem to be acting in good faith. And I realize that words are cheap. We have to see what's going on. I'm not suggesting that you guys are here blowing smoke at us. Uh, so we have, we have the ultimate control here. If they're not gonna behave as they're telling us they're going to, then we have to do something about it. And I am more than willing to do something about it if we get to that point.
Mr. Duffy?
Hi, I'm Mike Duffy. I live at one twenty-eight Bay Road. I'm in a butter. And, uh, one concern that I'm hearing out of, out of this, uh, well, first of all, we're originally concerned about the whole size of it, but I think it's alleviated a little bit by, uh, some of the decisions, but there's no, doesn't seem to be any limit on the number of people, a written limit on the number and the size of events that can be held. Uh. It's by saying the number of seating in the pavilion or whatever, but that's not part of the legal agreement that we have with them. I think it would be too well for the neighbors if the select board were to put some maximum limit on the size of events that can be held. Thank you.
Uh, David Olson, good. The, the, the last question I had was about the limit, the capacity. We have, there's a limit for the clubhouse. There's a limit for the pavilion. But now we're including that entire area in premises. So is there a limit for that?
No, I don't think we're, we're not talking about the, the East Lee side. I think we're talking about the area between the subhouse and the pavilion and just, just that open area. And I, I don't know that there, I mean, where an occupancy limit deals with fire code, building codes, et cetera, clubhouse, pavilion, actual capacity. You're probably dealing with something that's like, uh, public health, safety and welfare. And you're, you're probably thinking about, you know, and I don't know if it's, you guys say if there's an event over four hundred people, we'll get a crowd control coordinator or something like that, or we'll, we'll work with the police department. You know, I think it comes down to something where there are other enforcement authorities in town who can say, well, jeez, this just doesn't look safe on the one hand for public health, safety and welfare. And if there is some, um, um, nuisance, you can probably also send the police there and say, hey, listen, you guys are just being too loud. And so for that outdoor area, I don't want to say it's self-regulating. It doesn't have those strictures of building code, fire code, like the pavilion and the clubhouse would have. Um, and so I think it's up to you guys to think about, is there some number? Without limiting yourself too much, but where you could say, okay, if it reaches this, then we'll have that conversation with police and maybe we get a, a crowd manager. Um, and then like I said, the, the police and fire would have the ability to come in if there was an issue.
My concern is that it will, there'll be an event and it will happen without the plan, plan and say, we need to have this coordinated. It's, we're having a fundraiser for something that's a good cause and everybody wants to support it. And it's gonna be the Young Men's Club. Well, let's go. Hey, you wanna come with me? Bring your friends. There's a party down the Young Men's.
Are you a member?
I will be.
So to address that, I'm a retired firefighter lieutenant, thirty years on Hadley Fire. I've worked with Mike Spanky, Mike Mason, any large event. I always reach out to them, give them a heads up. Certified crowd manager, actually just aspired after we knew it. But, um, we do take that into consideration. We do reach out to the town whenever we have larger events that where we think can't handle it. I mean, we only have so many bathrooms in the pavilion, so you know, it limits us what we can have there. We don't want to overdo our septic system and, and everything else. So I mean, as a business, we, we take precautions.
I mean, I think we're, we're trying to contemplate everything that can possibly go wrong. And I worry about, it, I mean, we can keep conjuring up all sorts of things. I think that, you know, at some point we have to, again, assume people are acting in good faith. Um, again, want to protect the neighbors. It sounds like you guys are saying the right things in terms of wanting to have your own quiet enjoyment of your club and not be having to be brought in here all the time. So I think everybody's on the same page. And, you know, maybe to the crowd, uh, size issue or something, we could just leave it that, you know, if, if on the off chance there's some sort of a situation that we go on record right now saying that you will immediately be brought, brought back in here. Um, should something occur that gets out of hand? Again, I, you know, I don't know if it's four hundred, five hundred, five hundred twenty-five. I mean, I, you know, it just feels a little bit arbitrary, but understand the point that you're all making and let's just hope it doesn't become an issue. I mean, in reality, you could have a rowdy group of fifty people or a, a good group of, of six hundred. Like there's really, it's, everything right now is hypothetical and I'd like to give you guys the opportunity to. I don't want to say behave because it's not like.
To be on your point, this past summer, we did get, I was actually bartending upfront. We had a noise complaint for a fiftieth high school reunion that the music was too loud. Police officers showed up, sat in the front parking lot, could not hear the music. And I'm sure not judging anybody in here, but most people in there probably couldn't hear it either. But it's like, it, it, we try to be good neighbors. And, you know, it, again, a sixty person party. High school graduation party. Yeah, kids could be screaming, whatever. I mean, you'll have that.
I have a question for Jennifer.
Jennifer? Yes.
Sorry, Jennifer. Um, one thing I just wanted to check on is I remember at a previous um, meeting and, and separately, we had talked about as we were, as discovery was occurring about this licensing, um, for the two club licenses in town, both the Young Men's Club and the Legion. There's a written requirement that we get, um. compensation history for board officers for like the past year or something like that. Um, and you said to wait until this happened to make sure that we got that so we can check off that box.
We got it.
We did get it. It's in here.
All right.
The club turned it in, I date stamped it and attached it with the documents for y'all to review.
Okay, great.
Yep.
All right, I have one statement. I asked the board to consider when they're talking about time for inside and outside, that this is a residential neighborhood. It's zone residential. Um, I hope that you would consider having a two-time slot so that anything outside of the clubhouse is ten o'clock and anything inside is one o'clock, which is their present provision for operation. Just to stick with that and not add the deck because it's a fixture of the clubhouse. For the one o'clock time zone. I'm asking you to exclude the deck from one o'clock. I, I just asked for you to consider that.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this?
Uh, I made the assumption that the line is going to be moved back to the front of the building. Are you in agreement on that?
Yep.
So that is going to be the new line. Okay, thank you.
And so just so unclear, straight across north to south. No closer to the road as extended. Okay.
I want to ask about UMass runs their parties, that zone agriculture residential. You guys put these same kind of restrictions on them? Cause I never heard of one. They seem to do what they want, break all kinds of sound barriers, everything else, and nobody says nothing. Why?
Tell us who you are, sir, please.
What?
Tell us who you are.
Tell me who you are. I'm John Mitskowski. Who are you? I can't read that.
Randy Isner.
Good for you. I get a bold statement, what you, what you did. Right. I think that very un, unbecoming.
Not the place, Johnny.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Cause you did it. You know what the hell you said.
Okay. Talk to me after.
I'll talk to you with the public. For what everybody knows.
So are we ready to move on here or are there more comments?
Okay, is there any additional comments in regards to the Young Men's Club alteration of premise? Okay.
Let me just note one thing. The existing license does include the building and the pavilion. Uh, Monday to Saturday, eight AM to one AM, Sundays, eleven AM to one AM. And so that includes the pavilion as it stands right now. Eight AM to one AM.
So do we want to have any further conversation about the, the outside, the deck, the one o'clock? Do we want to see how it goes and then same rules apply? There's a problem, you're yanked right back in here and we may need to.
And they, I mean, they're here, they hear you. It's been very clear.
I was all up earlier on Sundays for going very far, but hey, well.
He's there.
I'm in favor of giving them a chance to see how they can manage the deck.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion then that we approve the, uh, section twelve. Be very clear, section twelve license for the Young Men's Club as presented with the modification for the setback of the blue line.
Front line.
Front line, um, to make sure alcohol isn't, um, served or imbibed, uh, beyond that point to encroach on the road. Again, with the clear understanding that, um, we're, this is on a trial basis. Um, and if any of the issues that the neighbors have brought up, um, do arise that we'd like to see you again. All second.
Motion by Molly, seconded by Jane. Is there any further discussion from the select board? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Amy.
Yes.
They're all. Both are hearing.
Oh, and I'm going to close the public hearing. And we're going to move on.
I'm not rushing. I'm going to have you out.
Okay.
So.
Same juice you want to put out.
Okay, so moving, moving on to old business.
Actually, do you want me to do the parking rack?
Okay, so we're going to move on to old business. Excuse me, gentlemen, we're going to continue our meeting. So if you guys are going to continue to talk, you can do that outside or you can sit and listen to the meeting, up to you. All right. Um, so we're going to invite, uh, Jim Shay. Sorry, I was pulling it up. And then, uh, is Amy Jennings here?
She was unavailable.
Okay, um, so if you want to come up here, um.
Can you handle the pressure, Jim?
Lights are pretty bright.
Um, so they're seeking approval for a change of location for the softball fields project. Uh, the new, the new location of the fields will be behind the Hadley Elementary School. And so historically, this was a vote that we took in twenty twenty-one, um, back when, uh, David and, uh, John were still on the board, um, and myself and, and Jane and Joyce. Um, originally they had come to us wanting to do it, uh, next to the Hadley, the new North Hadley Fire Station. And now there's, they're looking to amend that.
That's correct, uh, for a couple of reasons. Initially, it was because that was one of the potential sites for the new DPW. And then there was also talk about possible soil contamination and, um, issues like that. So we kind of put our heads together and, um, came up with a new location, which actually makes a lot more sense. Because now we don't have to build a parking lot, which would have been two thirds of our budget for the field. Um, and if you have multiple children playing sports, you don't have to have one here and one up, you know, three, four miles up the road. So, um, I neglected to come back to you folks after I got approval from everyone else. I have spoken to, uh, Principal Dowd. I spoke to the superintendent and I spoke to the school committee and all of them are on board with moving it. Um, or the construction of a new field and the rehab of the old field that are there. Um, so I don't have any visual aids for you, but if you're standing behind the elementary school, looking at uh, the safety complex, it would be field number three, which is to the left. Um, that's going to be the rehabbed field that we're going to skim and skim means taking all the grass off of the infield and replacing it with the appropriate, uh, fill. The reason we're doing that there is because if we put it where there isn't a field in the southeast corner, the outfield's of the large baseball field, which is field number one, which is the southwest side of the field. Um, there would be, bow fields would overlap and for baseball, they put in a temporary fence. Um, and that just wouldn't work. So we're going to, I've met, we've measured it all up and um, if we put the softball field down where field three is, it alleviates that situation. And then we can put a new field for the little kids, which is also going to be skinned. So it can be used for softball and baseball. Um, and all of that is cheaper than putting the softball field in the parking lot. And so that's my request from you guys. I got permission from everybody else, but you and that luckily Carolyn reminded me that I needed to come in front of you guys again because we were moving it.
So the youth baseball, um, so for the summer and everything, their tournaments and stuff. So again, these fields will be, um, you'll be able to modify them for.
So we don't, won't need to modify anything. The, the, it'll be a permanent softball field just for the young ladies that are playing.
Oh, and that's two, the two fields for.
Yep.
The youth base. Okay.
Yeah, there'll be two, still two fields. There's the smaller one and the larger one. And then there'll be, so right now field three is for the little kids. That's pretty much the only ones that use it. It's the park and rec and coach pitch, stuff like that. And so with grass and with these kids learning, um, the grass, if you hit the ball, it can catch a lip and come up and hit you in the face. So what we talked about with the president, Cal Ripken and their board, he said, I'd like it if it were just skinned like everything else.
Right.
So that takes away one of those possibilities happening with those small kids. So that's why we're going to do it that way.
I think it's a grand idea.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
The motion to, um, approve the proposal that's been agreed upon by everybody else already.
Second.
Motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck, Jim.
Thanks for waiting, Jim.
All right, um, is there anyone else here that's waiting?
The DPW.
Got a schematic design committee appointment.
Okay, let's do that since we have two individuals here for that. Um, so there are three letters of interest for the two open seats on the DPW schematic design committee. So we have David Phil and then uh, Richard is also here. Uh, so Bermuda, Bermuda, okay, excellent. Um, would the two of you like to come in the front here? Just so that you can be on camera and, um, answer any questions.
So I just want to say one thing before you start to say, Mr. Nyheart is interested as well. He is, uh, with Joyce. At the Legion. Um, I know there are two open seats. I spoke with Tim and he said, if the board so desired, he would be willing to serve as a non-voting member. So I don't know if we need that, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay.
And can I just clarify that you had spoken at the last one? I just looked at this, um, you, you are, this will most likely be your building committee.
Yes.
And we'll be talking about that. I just wanted to remind you.
Yep.
Um, are either of the two of you on any other boards or committees in Hadley?
At the moment, no.
No, I, I was on municipal building until it was disbanded and at this point, no.
Okay.
I was, I'm a member of the Call Forest Fire Department, but I was also a member of the North Hadley Building Committee.
So, uh, the only reason I'm asking this because I know that Tim's already on the bylaw committee. So if we were looking for any like, you know, like fresh blood.
Yep.
Um, you want to just briefly tell us why?
Say that.
Can we just hear quickly like why both of you are interested?
Well, um, I was on a design committee at UMass for Booster Dining Collins. That was a fifty million dollar project. Ended up that. Um, I've been in maintenance, building maintenance for forty-five years at UMass. And, uh, I did work for the highway department, uh, starting back with Mike Mieski, Mike Lomoski and Joe Pip, while in part-time doing alarm meters and, and why not? So I kind of know with the ins and outs of the trucks and how it worked at least a while back. Um, and I'm probably the closest neighbor.
You're a neighbor.
It was more of the backyard protection.
Um, so, you know, without all of that, and you know, now that municipal building wasn't, isn't there any longer, I feel, that's an open spot. Why not give it a shot? So, um, and, and I would absolutely believe that the DPW needs something. But I hear a lot of people squawking already from numbers that they've heard and I'd like to come up with something that DPW was happy with and the taxpayer is happy with. And maybe it's right where these guys already came up with. Not, I haven't seen the plans and I'm not going to criticize what's there. But I think a new set of eyes can come up with a suggestion or two.
Sounds good. Okay.
Um, yeah, so I've been in the building trades for twenty-five years. I own and operate Bermuda Construction, um, here in Hadley. Probably see the trucks all over the place. Um, I'm familiar with, you know, commercial buildings, residential buildings. Um, the second that I, I've heard the same thing. So kind of level-headed, like, you know, can kind of find that needs and wants, um, balance, uh, as a resident and a taxpayer. Um, so I just, a way to give back. Um, you know, kind of had to step away from the fire department somewhat. I'm still involved as much as I can be, but my way to kind of give back to the town. I want to be involved. Um, I think that would be a, a good asset.
Who else is on this committee already?
Randy Isner, Jim Maximowski, Jerry Berg, Andy Klopaki. Uh, Wally Psychowski. Who else?
Tom Quinlan.
God. I was gonna say. Gary.
I got Gary. Who else, Jim?
No.
Um, Tom Quinlan, do you have him?
Oh yeah, no, and, and the building inspector. That's it. That's the seven that's there now.
All right. Jim, uh, you're the chair. Is that right?
Chair of the first committee. Yeah, we'll be reorganizing for this one.
Okay. Do you have any objection to either of these two individuals?
I, I was going to say if Tim is willing to act as a non-voting member, you probably got your decision. I highly recommend both these guys, all three of them.
Okay. Um, I guess I'd leave it to the committee to decide when they reform, if they need a non-voting member, um. I'm happy to appoint these two individuals tonight.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we can, we can revisit it. I guess, does that make sense, Jimmy? You, you want to have a meeting and if we decide Tim will be helpful, then we'd have to come back to the board to get him appointed?
Well, I mean, if, if, or you could just change your criteria and appoint all three members. I don't know if you can do that.
I wouldn't do that. You don't want an even number.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I worry about the, again, just with these committees that sometimes it's only just one or two more bodies just tip the scales and then you never, then the evenings turn into. So I'm trying to look out for you guys in part, but.
Are you concerned these guys might be long-winded, Molly?
But I mean, I think the idea of adding the two was to make sure that we had a broader community perspective.
Yep.
Um, I don't want to make it so unwieldy and.
All right, well.
So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the applications and appoint, um, Rick Bermuda and David Phil to the DPW Facility Schematic Design Committee.
I'll second that. I guess I'd, no, I'll let you second it because I gotta say, um, motioned by Molly, seconded by Jane. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just have one comment for the two, for the two gentlemen that we typically meet at four o'clock in the afternoon on about the third Wednesday of the month. So just be aware of that, that it is not a night meeting.
We can make it work.
So Amy, if I can just remind you guys to get sworn in at the clerk's office, but also I think on the, the next select board meeting to clarify the name as well as the purpose of it and the beginning and end. I know that's been an issue in the past of when committees. Yeah, so we'll clarify that purpose. Or maybe we'll put that purpose in the chair's hands and have them write a purpose and, and, and we'll prove it.
Better.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do, uh, form of town government, do we have?
We got license renewals. We didn't do those yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we actually have Patricia Lloyd up there from Collins Center. Is that right? So you have the Collins Center here. Um, it's a, uh, I can actually, I can have, if Troy is on, if he wants to introduce them, I'm see Anthony, I see. Yeah.
You have, you have the whole team here. So I'll let Anthony introduce everybody.
Sure, thank you. Let me, what I'll do is that we pull up the slides first. And then I'll have everyone introduce themselves, um.
Do we want to have the slides up there?
He's going to put them up.
Okay.
If, if I can just preface this for one second, the, uh, the reason we've invited the Collins Center here is as a, this is a part of the discussion that that was, has begun about a strong town administrator and a special act. And as we, I, I, I ran in. And as we, I I I ran into Anthony while, when the lieutenant governor was here. And they explained that they do present to towns different forms of government, what it means. It's more educational right now. There's, um, but also um, they'll be able to present to you what they can do to help if that's of any interest to you. But I think presentation itself is going to be very varied. I told them fifteen minutes, so we're gonna try. Okay, thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to keep this to fifteen minutes and I'll just, um, let's activate the share. Can you all see, uh, see the presentation?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, so the town man, the town administrator did a sort of a great introduction. It's kind of a broad, it's really is a broad overview of organizational structure at the municipal level. My name's Anthony Wilson. I'm a public service manager at the Collins Center. I'll give a little background on the Collins Center in a second. Uh, but I'll have the rest of my team introduce themselves. Start with Pat- Patricia.
Hi, I'm Pat Lloyd. I'm also with the Collins Center and I practice at the Collins in the areas of charters and organizational work, um, and I also work in the HR, on the HR team with the Collins Center.
Mel?
Yes, good evening. Uh, my name is Mel Kleckner with the Collins Center as well, also working in organizational structure. Um, and I, uh, have the distinction of serving as a town administrator for, uh, about forty-one years in Massachusetts. So uh, I am retired recently, uh, and I provide a more practical review when we, um, review a charters and other organizational structures and communities.
So I'm gonna quickly just go through the background, um, of the presentation. So we have a quick background from the Collins Center. Some basics on, uh, the charter. The charter is essentially, um, what we call a foundational document for municipal governments. Hadley does not have one. Um, and we'll sort of, we can explain that and and explain the process, uh, as it relates to charter and why Hadley doesn't, uh, doesn't have one. Um, the process for charter adoption, the different forms of government, general trends that municipalities across the state are, uh, have been moving to or the direction that things have been going. Alternatives to charter, um, as well as some guiding principles as any community looks towards modernizing its, uh, its organization. And then we'll finish it up with some quick questions.
Um, so what we're seeing, I'm sorry to pause, we're not seeing the slideshow. We're still seeing the, um,
which is the first page.
The first page as if it's in edit mode. Well, there you go.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, quick background on the Collins Center, formed in, uh, two thousand eight by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, placed inside of the University of Massachusetts with the express, express goal of providing management consulting advice to public entities like, um, municipalities, but also state agencies and really any public organization. Uh, we've worked with more than, uh, two-thirds of the three hundred fifty-one municipalities across the state. And we're here today to talk specifically about charter and organizational structure, but we worked in areas, finance, human resources, uh, analytics, IT, uh, and, uh, executive recruitments. Uh, we've worked in towns as small as, uh, less than a thousand residents and towns as big as, um, you know, more than one hundred thousand uh, residents. We're gonna talk more about the forms of government, um, that are predominant across the state. And the center has worked in all of them. Uh, we've helped with, uh, transitions from one form of government to another as well as, uh, improvements to existing governmental structures. And, uh, at the bottom there, there's some of, some of the projects that we have currently underway. We're in Somerville right now, um, Cambridge, Ludlow, Rockland, Sanesfield, a very small community in Williamstown. And these are some of our most recent, uh, charter and organizational structures, uh, that we've completed. Um, you'll see the most recent one is Plymouth, Watertown, um, a a neighbor of yours, Amherst, Framingham, Pittsfield, North Hampton, Everett, uh, Newburyport, going back to two thousand five in Melrose. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mel to talk about some charter basics. Mel, we can't, Mel, I can't hear you. I think you're muted, Mel.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony. Um, what we'd like to, uh, talk about now is really what a charter is. And as Anthony mentioned, it is a foundational document that comprehensively addresses the fundamental structure and operation of the town government. Similar, um, like a constitution, uh, to a state and federal government. Now, there are some towns that have town manager or town administrator special acts. Um, they are sort of like mini charters, but they're not full charters. And we're gonna talk about that option, uh, with you later on. Um, and many towns do not have a single document, uh, that serves as a charter at all. Its structure and operation is a cumulative result of state laws, special state laws and local bylaws, and that is the case with Hadley. Um, and just to, um, uh, clarify that charters, uh, are always subordinate to state law, but they are, um, they are, uh, uh, superior to local bylaws. So, um, I won't read this, but, um, you, you'll have the presentation, uh, with you. And, um, I think this is a really good summary of what a charter is. Uh, it's quoted from, uh, the National Civic League and I will let you read it at your leisure. Next. Uh, so as I mentioned, uh, Hadley's local government, uh, in your case is over three hundred plus years old. And, uh, over that time period, there's been state laws that relate to, um, organization of local government. You've accepted a number of state laws. You've adopted special home rule legislation. I noted the, uh, Public Works uh, legislation a few years ago, and of course have local bylaws as all municipalities do. What the charter does, it creates a single record of all of how the town operates. And, uh, it clarifies in all of these three hundred year, um, uh, accumulation of 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 things that your government is based on. And also, when you adopt the charter, uh, most towns will look at, um, to see if uh, the government is responsive to Hadley and its unique culture and community. Uh, next slide. And, uh, in that way, what you're doing is not only codifying existing town government structure with modern terms and concepts, but you're also considering different forms of government. Uh, you know, you're asking yourself, is the existing town government structure responsive to how municipal government has evolved, um, over years and in the twenty-first century? Next. So, um, you know, you're, you're ensuring that your town structure is consistent with state and federal law as well. There's, um, laws, uh, that particularly impact municipalities, labor and employment laws. Those are both state, federal. You have your procurement and open meeting law, which are states, state laws. And, um, many communities also ensure that the charter is consistent with, um, evolving values and cultural changes. For example, uh, gendered pronouns and also the names of boards. I believe Hadley has already adopted the select board name. Those often happen in these charters. Next slide. So I am going to, uh, now turn it over to Pat Lloyd, who will, uh, handle the next set of slides.
Pat, you're muted. Pat, Pat, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, in Massachusetts, there are two paths to adopting a charter. Um, one path is through a citizen petition in which an elected charter commission is established, um, and very precise timetables and and detailed state laws are followed. This completely circumvents the legislature. Um, a charter is recommended by the commission to be approved by the attorney general and then goes directly to voters. Um, that is not what we're here to talk about tonight. Um, a special act charter is another way of making changes or for, or creating a charter, or we will talk about some other special act pathways. Um, typically, the, the process is initiated by the select board. The select board would appoint a charter committee and this committee, um, will gather information, make recommendations to the select board. Um, we'll talk about the process in a little more detail in the next slide. Once a charter commit, review committee is convened by the, by the select board, the committee goes through a work plan, which is a very thorough process of getting input from all the stakeholders in town, including, including the staff, including departments, including the public. And they will, we get together and prepare a final report and a recommendation which is submitted to the select board. Now, the select board can take these recommendations, can choose to accept them, you know, as a whole and or can instead choose some of the selections, some of the recommendations to put forward to town meeting. When, if the board approves any of these recommendations, they're put on the warrant at town meeting to ask to ask the town whether they would approve a special act petition for town meeting action. Um, if it's approved by this town meeting, then this proposed charter, it goes to the legislature. Um, this is different than the original process we, we talked about. Um, the legislature then will. Oh, excuse me? Was there a question? Oh, I guess I didn't hear. Um, the legislature then takes the petition, um, has it reviewed very thoroughly by, um, its own state process. Um, if it finds it acceptable, it assigns it to a committee, it holds a hearing. Um, and usually your state legislature will help shepherd this through the process. Um, if once the committee, if the committee reports favorably on it, the bill has to be approved by both houses of the legislature and signed by the governor. Um, there's a final step. If the legislature approves the charter, the voters then will, um, determine ultimately whether the proposed charter will go forward. What we do at the Collins Center is really shepherd the committee through the process of creating a charter and deciding whether to make any recommendations. Um, the first step is really looking at what is the structure on the ground currently in the town. Uh, we, we thoroughly help the committee research the current structure and what is the, what is going on in the town right now? Um, what are the questions that the committee has? What are the changes that the town might be considering for the future? Uh, we, the committee will then create a public process to get more input from residents, businesses, stakeholders, departments. Um, and really hear what are the, what are the most pressing issues facing the town? Um, we look at other forms of government. Um, and I believe we'll talk a little bit about the forms of government, um, given Hadley's size. Uh, there may be some limitations in the overall forms of governments, but there's a lot to do. There, there are a lot of suggestions that we could possibly make in the current form of government. Um, the committee will prepare a report, document the, documenting the findings and then make their recommendations um, to the select board and ultimately if the select board chooses to go forward to town meeting. Uh, this whole process, the committee process generally takes about twelve to eighteen months. And I think Anthony will be talking about the forms of government.
So I'll briefly go through the forms of government. And, um, sort of at the outset, I just want to state that, um, municipalities can take, um, I don't say they can take many forms, but there are often pieces of some forms that may bleed into others. So these are general categories and even within forms, there can be some, some, um, variety. Um, but generally in Massachusetts, um, communities really fall into one of three forms and and they are in two categories. Towns, uh, which generally, um, have a, uh, select board and have some form of town meeting. The two most common are the open town meeting, um, which I believe is Hadley's, and then there's a representative town meeting. In the city form, there's a mayor council, um, a form which itself has some variety. But when we talk about mayor council, we're generally talking about what is sort of colloquially called, um, the strong mayor um, and a, um, city council. And then there is the city manager form of government where the city manager, um, that runs the day-to-day operations, um, but is hired and sort of managed by the city council. Um, there are some limitations based on the Massachusetts, um, constitution. Communities with less than six thousand, um, uh, inhabitants, um, cannot, uh, form a representative town meeting. And communities with less than twelve thousand, uh, residents, uh, cannot form any, any of the types of city government. And this is, uh, I won't belabor this slide. It's a, a general outline of sort of two things. The raw number of municipalities that fall into one of the other category. As you can see, just in terms of municipalities, the vast majority on the left-hand side of the screen are open town meetings, uh, open town meeting communities. Um, but population-wise, um, there's a significant tilt towards, um, uh, city, uh, mayor, uh, city mayor council form of government. Um, so the vast, numerically, open town meeting is the predominant form of government in Massachusetts. But most people will find themselves just by population in a, um, in a mayor council form of government. So, form of government, open, uh, the summary of Hadley's, uh, form of government, Hadley as an open town meeting. Um, as, uh, Mel stated earlier, uh, it's a, uh, it's an aggregation of municipal gen- general laws, uh, optional laws, special legislative acts and bylaws that have been sort of formed over time. They're not located in a specific place. So, one of the, um, I guess one of the issues that can arise is that when a person is researching, um, the structure of government in a community like Hadley, they may find some out-of-date reference, um, about how, what the, how the structure is supposed to be fo- be focused. And it, you have to do that research to know, oh, something has been amended, changed, um, to understand how, um, how things currently operate. Or know that amendments have been made. Uh, the executive of the, um, town of Hadley, um, that's who we're talking to, the five-member select board, um, which has, um, again colloquially called sort of the weak town administrator role. Um, we've counted eleven elected officials, including boards. Um, and you follow a, a budget process common to open town meetings. The town administrator prepares the budget, submits it to the select board for the policy direction. And it goes to the finance committee, which has the responsibility of reviewing and recommending a budget to the town, to the town meeting. This chart was taken from a, uh, DLS report that was provided to the town, I believe, back in two thousand seventeen. Um, I think the big thing to take from this chart is that it, uh, Hadley has a relatively flat organizational structure. Um, all, pretty much all, um, or sorry, most, the majority of town employees report directly to the select board. Um, and while under the bylaws, the town administrator has, um, sort of s- s- uh, supervisory authority within the town, they really don't have any, um, authority relative to hiring, firing, um, promotions or anything, or anything of that nature. Um, so there, there aren't really any direct reports to the town administrator. Uh, and so some of these came up in the Department of Revenue two thousand seventeen report. Uh, they recommended, and we're not necessarily recommending these things. These are just, we're just pointing out sort of things that, um, the town has already, information's already received from, from sort of another source, which was to grant, uh, grant the town administrator sort of greater appointing authority. Uh, combine and appoint the elected treasurer, uh, collector positions, which is actually, we get to the trends. That's one of the trends, uh, across the state. Uh, to have that in a consolidated office, um, to create a full-time human resources in in, in information technology function. Um, and to create a staff-based financial management team. That last one is also, um, a trend across the state. Uh, municipal finances increasingly becoming complex, um, and so to have a dedicated team working in the same direction on that is just been a trend across the state. And I, I, I still stole some of his thunder, but I'll turn it over to Mel to talk about the trends.
Thank you, Anthony. Um, yeah, it, it, when, when a community, um, engages in a charter, um, there are a number of things you're looking at. But usually, um, it involves looking at the organization uh, and, uh, creating a more streamlined organization. As Anthony said, that, uh, chart, the organization chart is very flat. What you're typically seeing, uh, in charters these days are a reduction in the number of elected boards and officials combined with the centralization of management under one appointed manager or administrator. Um, that's not always the case and that's not required, but that's what we, we see most often when we're. Um, that's not always the case, and that's not required, but that's what we, we see most often when we're working in communities. There's an emphasis on the budget process, including long-term capital planning, uh, highlighting some of the powers that towns have as home rule provides. Uh, emerging technology sometimes comes into it, especially around community engagement processes. Uh, standardized procedures for the conduct and operation of local government, remove gender references. And also a requirement that you have a periodic review of both your charter and your bylaws. Also, what we're seeing is um, in many cases, removal of residency requirements um, for employees, including the uh, administrator. Uh, mechanisms for assuring that the charter is enforced, uh, defining coordinating emergency management activities. Uh, how, how, how residents can participate and stay informed. That's referred generally as community engagement. And the adoption of procedures for resident initiatives, referenda and recall of elected officials. So these are the kind of things that we tend to see more often these days than not. Um, uh, as Pat Lloyd mentioned, we as the Collin, at the Collins Center can help facilitate a committee or if the select board is doing it, uh, th- their analysis of these trends, including best practices and providing sample language. So, if you are not going to pursue a charter, there are some, some um, alternative or parallel paths that can be taken either at the same time that a charter review is going on or in place of the, of a comprehensive charter. And one of those is, I know you've talked previously about a town manager or a town administrator act. Um, now, uh, that is a special act of the legislature, so it has the same authority as a charter. But it's only addressing a, a limited aspect of your town government. But um, it's possible that um, that's the issue and, and, and you want to work on that either uh, in advance or uh, parallel to the discussion that the co- that charter committee is having. Um, and that echoes also with the conversion of certain elected officials uh, uh, from elected to appointed. Um, always want to review outdated processes and establish best practices. Um, one of the things we'd, we'd like to encourage that if a charter process has been initiated, these pro- these parallel paths or alternative paths are coordinated that um, you, if you have appointed a committee and they're starting to work and do research on your town and all alternative forms, they really need to be part of the process as you make other changes or consider other changes. And um, I'll go quickly through this. Uh, we do a lot of charter work and what we focus on are the following, uh, clarity, consistency, coordination and accountability. And uh, that's the uh, the end of our presentation and we're very happy to uh, listen to your questions. Um, you know, there are, there are other major issues facing you. Um, and you know, you probably want to deal with those in your charter. So if you're having budgetary issues and you want to strengthen your financial management, or you have land use issues and you need to, you know, deal with the planning process, those are all things that you want to look at during a process, but not all issues can be examined, resolved uh, during these processes. And often, what will happen is the committees might say, uh, we're going to prioritize this and, and you know, look at something else down the road. So that's also another, another way to uh, to make this a little bit more manageable. And uh, that uh, is the end of our presentation and we're very happy to uh, take any questions or comments that you have. Thank you.
So, if we wanted to engage with the Collins Center on an initiative like this, um, can you talk a little bit about how municipalities have been able to fund it? I mean, are they typically doing a warrant article and getting the money at town meeting? Are there grants available? What are you seeing?
Well, often, um, it, it is, it is sort of out of your sort of general fund, so it would be through, through that warrant process. There are, um, for specific items, uh, there's, the state does offer, off, offer the uh, best practices grant. Now that's closed for this year. They usually do them every year. Um, so, you know, if you were looking into doing it next year, you'd, you'd have to really think about the parameters for that type of grant request, um, in sort of what, what type of projects it would cover. Um, but though the, the, I would say the, more than not, it's the um, sort of the general fund uh, warrant request.
And can you, just like a general price range, you know, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred?
Um, I would say, I would say not, not, I haven't seen any for fifty or seventy-five, so, so you're looking for below that. Um, um, it, but it, but you know, it really does vary uh, based on it. What happens usually when we're scoping a project like this? We're spending time talking to, usually it's, it's through the um, uh, town, town manager, town administrator. What is the, you know, what is the select board talked about? Wh- what is the interest? What's the scope of uh, what you're trying to do? Uh, Mel talked about the difference between this sort of full charter review and the sort of focused town manager, town administrator act. Um, and the process around that. And so, and so I would say it, it could vary, you know, twenty, thirty, fifteen, ten, um, somewhere in there. But again, it's, it's very community-specific. It's very project-specific. Um, and things of that nature.
So, uh, the select board would appoint a committee and you would guide them, or you would be doing the work?
Um, so there's, there's a, there's a number of, there's no, there's no right or wrong way. Well, I mean, legally, there could be a wrong way, but there's no sort of right or wrong way to, to form the committee. I think this community, I know that there was in the past a special act submitted by um, um, I think the HR director uh, to the select board. So it could be an entirely select board-driven process. Um, the select board could appoint a committee with select board members. Um, and then we would work with, whether it's the select board or whether it's a committee with a combination of citizens or just citizens. Um, we would work with them, because there's often a lot of questions about what do other communities uh, do? Are we, uh, what are the best practices? Um, um, what are the um, sort of the, the laws or the parameters around this or that? So we, we help to answer those questions. Um, we help to structure a process, um, that's can sort of get to the goals that uh, people are looking for. And we do help with the actual drafting, um, to make sure that the language fits. There's a, there's a push towards um, readable sort of natural language, not to sort of be overly formalistic, to make it so that just about anyone in town could read and understand what's written. Um, so we help with, with those sorts of things. So it's primarily focused on drafting. Uh, we're helping people form a process within the committees to get to the answer that they want. Um, and there's the drafting piece. Those are the sort of the three areas where we provide sort of the most assistance.
So we could essentially do like an act if we were interested in doing a strong town administrator? And that's completely separate from a charter? It can be like within a charter, if we should, if we chose to do a charter at a later date, something like that? How does that work?
Pat or Mel, feel free to, to, to um, uh, jump in here, but I think the distinction here is that it's still, if it's the, the, what we call the town manager or town administrator act, it's still a an organizational change to the, to the town, but it's scoped much smaller versus when we think about it, a, a, a charter, thinking holistically about how the entire town operates versus just how the town administrator uh, interacts with the rest of the town. Pat or, or Mel, feel free to fill in where I left a gap.
No, we, we've, we've worked with uh, communities that have a, created a town administrator act, and then we build a charter around that. Or, or we do it right from the ground up and do it all, all at once. Um, so there's, there's a lot of different, you know, ways to do that.
So if, if we were thinking about pursuing this, um, and we wanted to get the funding for it, obviously we'd need to go through that scoping effort with you to find out what we might be looking at. So what would that process look like?
So, um, it's usually, um, uh, uh, the times that I've done, it's usually been uh, with the sort of town administrator, town manager. Um, and they've been sort of the go-between, I think, with the committee. Um, but it would be, it would be focused on the priorities of the committee. Um, and I'll just, I'll be candid, I think most of the times were that most, that all of us who have been in the call participated. It was the select board having a discussion on what they think sort of needs to be fixed in either um, getting us on board to help them, or they're appointing a committee sort of with those goals as their guideposts. And then we're assigned to work with that committee.
Right, so have any other questions?
Right now.
That's great.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yeah, that was really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Okay. Um.
So is that something that we can put on a future agenda to talk about?
Hmm.
Yep, I would agree with that.
Um, all right, so let's jump back into old business. Um, Jennifer is on still and we are, are looking to do the twenty-twenty-four license renewals. Um.
And I think we need to do these tab by tab?
Yes.
I think that's how we did it last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, please. Is, so, so are you okay to just go ahead and take the votes?
To, so we'll start with alcohol.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, I make a motion to approve the alcohol licenses as presented.
Second.
Motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Uh, motion to approve the common vic licenses as presented.
Second.
Motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the class one and class two licenses as presented.
Second.
Motion by Molly, seconded by. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the entertainment licenses as presented.
Second.
Motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the automatic amusement licenses as presented.
Second.
Motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right.
Um, can I, can I ask really quickly? Um, I was, I was out this, this morning, so I checking the mail, I added two more in this evening. Um, it's Cinemark's theater license and um, premier amusements, which is the Cinemark's arm that says the automatic amusements for thirteen automatic amusement licenses. Can I ask you how to approve those as well, please?
Motion to approve Cinemark and the premier? Is that what you called it?
Yes, yes.
Motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, um, so. Oh, um, town administrator roles update. Um, that's in here. I think it was more for informational, not think. We need her, I don't think we need her to go through and read all of that.
No, and Carolyn, if you want to, um, if we have any questions or anything, just bring them to you directly?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, excellent. Uh, cannabis equity policy, that one should be pretty quick, I believe.
We looked at this and got a clarification from our last meeting.
Yep, so, right. Um, so is there any questions or discussion on this?
Well, I think for the, the uh, viewing audience should know what the clarification was since the question was posed in, at our meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so that, Randy, that was your question and it had to do if we would be forced basically to not grant the second license if in fact we didn't have an applicant that met the criteria.
Correct.
And that indeed is the case.
That indeed is the case. So, my question, knowing that is, how much money do we take in currently from the two license is that we have out there now? Do we know the answer to that?
Jennifer, do you have those exact numbers?
Me, just give me a ballpark. I don't need exact.
Well, I can't tell you the tax revenue, but I know that we took in eighty-five thousand from the HCA agreement from only one of ours. Um, but we have not received any funds from the other.
Yeah. It's up over a hundred.
So are, if we, are we obligated to have this policy in place?
Yes, yeah, that's why it's in front of you.
Okay, forget any more questions.
Yeah, there's essentially nothing we can do.
Equity policy.
Second. All right, motion by Jane, seconded by Molly. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I mean, it's not like. Yeah, we're essentially trumped by the state, uh, in that one.
We have a collective agreement.
All right, so we have the, um, we're here to vote on the collective bargaining agreement for the United States or the United Public Services Employment Union. Uh, Local Two, uh, Four Two Four, um, Unit MADIV One Twenty Seven, Hadley Public Work Employees DPW Supervisors, uh, effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And this was something that we had already voted on.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so hang on just one second. What I'm looking at doesn't have the right date on it. The first page of whatever document I have, so July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-three. So I don't think that's right.
I don't think that's right either.
Oh, it should be twenty twenty.
Could be wrong. It is getting late.
Yeah.
We switch those out, re- unload the correct one right, back in right now.
Okay, that's fine. As long as I know it's being corrected, I'm good.
Motion to approve subject to the administrative correction.
Second.
All right, motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Um.
It's for the administrative correction.
That was for the administrative correction. Now you have to vote on it. Wait, no, we, no, she, that was a, it was contingent, yeah. Yeah.
She wasn't amending the motion.
All right, excellent. So I think we're, we've done everything in new business. Um, are there any other items not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance? Just, yeah, everyone, just I guess keep sure that I, climate change, that, that resignation, job, and depthed, all that. Okay, any other items not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance? Excellent. Uh, town administrators' reports. Jennifer, did, did you get that on?
No. Let's see.
I'm sorry, I might have missed it. Hold on. I'm sorry.
That's okay, you're not feeling great.
Do you want to just, um?
I can, yeah, let me just highlight it. They'll, if, if, if you can put it up there, I'll just highlight the changes real quick. Uh, let's see, hold on. It's gonna.
Here you go. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Bigger, that's good.
Yeah, I'm having trouble pulling mine up, of course.
So it looks like DPW feasibility is in red.
Yes, anything in red is an update, so I did, I, there was some, uh, uh, some updates that I did want to give on the dyke, but um, those are, DPW, uh, we've got one position there that is in the screening process, the HR assistant, the firefighter and Hadley Media, uh, production assistant. Uh, that's an interview we've interviewed, and I think there's probably some job offers that may, um, not job offers, but o- offering and then coming to you guys for approval. Um.
Right, we can review for it.
Great. Um. I'm having trouble seeing. Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see it from that far, so I gotta try to pull it up. No, I got my glasses on.
Oh, there you go. If you just do like one, one page and just zoom it in, maybe?
Yeah, what I, what I wanted to explain with the municipal solar is, I've actually changed that from municipal to the COA solar. Um, I've had, I'm continuing my conversations with Jonathan Parrott, and I did bring in uh, conversations with, um, can, Jennifer, can you slide it down, please?
There you go.
So, um, I met with uh, Jonathan and Nick Darble Off. I think, I'm probably killing that name, but um, from Sunbug, which is owned by Revision right now. Um, I had met with representative, with uh, representatives from the Climate Change Committee to just talk about moving forward. to just talk about moving forward with solar and what was the best for Hadley. And they did meet with Jonathan, and I, uh, Jonathan felt it was important to talk with a company out there who was interested in bigger projects like this. Because what, if you remember, Eversource was a, um, really was interested in the landfill, but they are no longer interested in that. But we, I wanted to bring in someone who's familiar with that, with those options, and I will be bringing up at a future, uh, committee, um, select board meeting about meeting with the Climate Change Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Select Board to look at, um, what, if there's a larger option, which would include the landfill and the two roofs, the library and the COA. So that's coming up, but that has, uh, I spent a lot of time on that the last week, so um, I'm excited that there could be some options. So if we go down, the levy, uh, Rich Niles from uh, Woodard and Sampson, he is going to be uh, submitting a mul, uh, municipal vulnera, vulnerability grant to advance the project to a thirty percent design. Uh, we can, we actually, I think we have three, uh, MVP grants going with letters of interest. Um, and they take a look at it and see what we're submitting. You can do multiple ones so that they're not competing with each other. But this will just enhance this, uh, the design to a thirty percent design, um, and just keep us going. So, uh, that's where that is right now. I'll keep you updated on that.
So are you saying that we could get grant money to pay for this?
No, this is for the design.
I mean, for the, yeah.
For the design, yes. It, it, this, this, even the design is multi-year. You're, it's different phases. This is just bringing it one step closer. Uh, reminding you about the conference, I, I think we've registered a couple of you to go, so, um, keep going, Jen. I think that's it. Okay, that's the only update I have, yes. Okay?
Um, are there any, uh, items for future discussion that anyone would like to have on future agenda? Okay. Any liaison reports? Um, any announcements? Okay. All right, then, um, I move pursuant to MGL Chapter Thirty A, Sections Twenty One A Three. That the board go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to Wilson Properties Group versus Hadley ATB Case Number X Dash Three One Zero Two Five Four. Case of Elaine Manor LP versus Hadley ATB Case Number F Dash Three Four Nine Two Three Three. Case HAP Community Services versus Hadley Housing Court Civil Action Number Nineteen H Seventy Nine CV Zero 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 Five Zero Nine. In the case of Town versus Ronald Nestor Housing Court Civil Action Number Twenty Two H Seventy Nine CV Zero 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 Nine Four Six. The case of Britain versus Bombadier at All Court slash Agency Land Court Docket Numbers Twenty One MISC Zero 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 Four Five Two DRR. The case of Valley Community Development Corporation versus the Town of Hadley Zoning Board of Appeals Court Agency Housing Appeals Committee. As the Chair, I have determined that the public discussion of which will have a detrimental impact on the litigating position of the board.
Second.
Uh, roll call to go into executive session.
Roll call vote, Keegan.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Devin Smith.
Yes.
Ed Iser.
Yes.
The board will can, will reconvene in open session to finish the legal updates.
General matter point of view, let me, I want to give you an overview just to remind the, the board. So, um, when we were originally engaged, um, we were engaged on an hourly rate, and then it became I think clear that it was beneficial to the town, um, and actually to help try to reduce litigation, that we, we moved to a flat fee. And so all of these general matters that I'm going to talk to you about covered under our flat fee. The only thing that is not covered under the flat fee are labor and then litigation. So all general matters, you know, if Jennifer has a quick question on licensing during the week and picks up the phone and calls us and asks us a licensing question, or Carolyn picks up the phone and calls us and asks us a procurement question, those are all covered under the flat fee. Um, so that's, just as a reminder, that's how we do our work. So, um, the big matters that I'm working on right now um, are the resolution of the contract dispute related to the Hockaman Cemetery. The next steps on that is I have to reach out to, um, to the attorney for the, um, contractor. Um, I've received all of the information I need to receive from the DPW um, relative to that construction compliance with the contract. And hopefully we'll be able to, um, resolve that issue and finish up that project. Um, I've also been monitoring after our original negotiation of the administrative consent order related to the, um, work at Algonquin and Wampanoag. Um, I'm engaged on reviewing, um, all the conversations between DEP and the engineers, um, to make sure that the administrative consent order is complied with and responding to any questions that Carolyn has. The engineers and the DPW Director are doing a great job, by the way, of working on that. Um, we recently drafted the Historic Preservation Restriction um, that was voted as part of the CPA Funds at Town Meeting, um, for St. John's Church. Um, that preservation restriction, unlike a couple, you pass, is actually approved by the Commonwealth Massachusetts, so it's perpetual. So that's the restriction that we provided to the town that will be for the CPA Grant Award. Uh, we also facilitated, um, as I think you know, the road taking for Birch Meadow. Um, and we did all the work, um, related to that. The votes for Town Meeting, the titles related to the documents, the review of the plans, and then obviously the, the takings process. And then the recording of the appropriate documents. Um, then, uh, just as an overview for the labor, um, work from Kate, uh, in my office. Uh, she's done the negotiations with Municipal Employees Union, the police officers, she's handled a police officer, um, disciplinary matter and a firefighter disciplinary matter. They've completed the supervisor's negotiation, the flex work hours policy, and the remote work policy. Um, also, my colleague Liz is the one who gave you the cannabis equity policy. Um, and you're right, uh, the Commonwealth is requiring that. You have until June of next year to adopt it. Um, and, uh, Randy, if license becomes available, you have to keep it open at least six months. Um, if you don't have an applicant, and then you can move on. Um, so that's, that's the social equity policy related to cannabis. Um, I did want to throw in a couple of things here. Um, I heard Carolyn talking about the, the solar options, and this is one of the reasons our flat fee actually is, is helpful.
Um, we needed not open the doors up for the topic. One second.
Waiting room's off. No one's in it.
Can I continue? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so the last thing I just wanted to point out, Carolyn, you were talking in your update about the solar options for the landfill and the two roofs. Um, when you're considering that, um, you should keep in mind there are three ways to engage companies in doing those. Um, there is a program called the Power Options Program. I'm not a fan, but it's helpful. Um, you don't have to go out to bid for it. Um, they, um, have their own vendor called Select. Um, I, you know, I'm not a fan of their contracts, but that's a negotiation item. So you could, you could get some information from them through the folks that you're already talking to. If you don't want to go out to bid, you can use the sixty-four A exemption, um, which shows how you found your contractors to go into those, both of those solar options. Um, but for the lease and the PPA. And then, of course, you can do it through thirty B as well. Where you have the landfill as well as the two roofs, um, that may be attractive to some of the, um, larger carriers like Blue Wave. Um, so, um, you know, I think it's beneficial to take a look at all of that. Um, are you in the Wamiko? Um, are you in the Wamiko area, or what other, what utility do you guys have?
They're not interested. They're, okay. Yeah, we are, so this, what's happened is, I mean, the Climate Change Committee has been very interested in this. And so, um, I have, want to make sure that it gets focused and researched, but it's under the Select Board's authority to pursue this. I want to engage other committees, so I think that you're going to be a big part of this. This is a complicated thing. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I would just say to you, there's a, um, Beth Green Black in Management, I think it's called. Um, she does the financial and the solar tax equity part of this. Um, uh, and solar tax credit part of this. And so anybody that gives you proposals, and frankly, I would say to you, um, you know, we have to do the legal end, but the most important part of this that you need to have reviewed by somebody who's familiar with the industry is the financial end. Because you will get proposals that do not give the town as much as you can get out of this. And somebody like Beth, somebody like Beth Green Black would be really beneficial. But in any event, um.
Management, you said?
Beacon, um, I'll send you the information.
Yeah. Okay.
So the big areas that I've been working on, in addition to our day-to-day stuff, licensing questions, you know, open meeting law, public records law, procurement stuff that happens on a weekly basis.
Thank you for being there. Um, so, um, I'm gonna ask, I'm sorry, but I think people may not have gotten on, because I'm not seeing someone just texting me thinking that was executive session live. We, I'm, I'm sorry to do this, but I really think it's the right thing to do. I'm not sure if people weren't able to get on. If we could just quickly run down those. Well, how do we know if they're on now? Well, because I just got a text saying it's what might be YouTube. That they're watching it live.
So you mean, do you mean do a rundown of the general stuff that I just did?
Please.
Okay, so Hockaman Cemetery, we're working on resolution of that contract dispute. Um, I'm working with the DPW Director. I'll be reaching out to the attorney for the contractor on that. Um, and trying to resolve that issue and wrap up that, that work and that contract. Um, been doing the, um, oversight, so to speak, of making sure that the Town's ACO Administrative Consent Order is complied with regarding the work at Algonquin and Wampanoag, along with the Town's Engineers and DPW Director. Um, we drafted the Historic Preservation Restriction, um, and the CPA Grant Funds, Grant for the Funds at St. John's Church. That Historic Preservation Restriction will be one which will be signed by Massachusetts Historical Commission, and therefore will be perpetual, um, which is what was voted on at Town Meeting and required under the CPA statute. Um, we facilitated the taking of Birch Meadow Road to make it a public way, which included all of the deed research, reviewing of the plans, and then helping to facilitate not the warrant articles, obviously, and then the taking process itself and recording those documents. Um, under our labor work, um, we've done the negotiations with the Municipal Employees Union, the Police Officer Discipline, Disciplinary Matter, a firefighter disciplinary matter, completed the supervisor's negotiations, uh, flex work hours policy, and remote work policy. Um, separate from that, um, provided the cannabis equity policy to the board as well.
Thanks again.
You're welcome. Well, they say, tell them what you're gonna tell them, tell them, and then tell them what you told them, right? There it goes.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
All right, great to see all of you. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Love you doing your second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.